So I'm going to call it to order and then I'm going to read that our pandemic thing here. So there's Michaela. Hi, Michaela.
Hi.
We were worried.
Me too.
Guys, before we go on air, I don't think Mike will be joining us. I don't know if you guys, if he sent something via that is his father was had some health issues. So he flew back California. And kind of thought he'd be on Zoom, but apparently not. So unless he pops in here, I don't know.
We are rolling, ready, and go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I want to call the Chaska City Council. Meeting to order via Zoom for Monday, December 7, 2020 at seven o'clock. And I'm going to read our COVID opening statement that I must read. Welcome, everyone. You might notice this meeting looks a little different due to COVID-19 pandemic. We are holding our meeting via video teleconference because the city council has declared a local emergency for COVID-19 pandemic. State statutes allows us to hold our meetings remotely. Even though we aren't meeting in person, we want to make sure you can participate. If you have joined the Zoom meeting, you will notice you are muted. You have a moderator. We have a moderator on call who will unmute those who wish to speak during the public comment portions of the meeting. Public comments will be reserved for visitor presentation, public hearings, or special circumstances determined by the council. Once we reach those parts of the agenda, I will ask if there are any public comments. If you wish to speak and have joined the meeting by computer or tablet. Tablet, please click on participants on the bottom of your screen and then select raise your hand icon. If you wish to speak and have joined the meeting by phone, press star nine and to raise your hand. Once your hand is raised, the moderator will announce your name and and phone number and unmute your line. Please remember that public comment is provided at the discretion of the council and is meant to provide productive discourse on topic related to the city of Chaska. Speakers shall refrain from comment or behavior that is deemed disorderly, derogatory, obscene, indecent, or off-topic. Any person engaging in such speech or action may be muted or removed from this meeting. If you are watching online or Comcast Channel 15, please be aware of the following. Our council members, city staff, and presenters are participating participating in the meeting remotely. There is a delay between the live meeting and the online and cable broadcast. All council actions will will be taken by a roll call vote. Thank you. Mike, do you have a flag ready?
I am entering adding adding. Ah, over here. Share screen. Miss top share. Are you able to see it?
Nope.
Okay.
You have to share your. You have to share your screen.
Where is it? How come it's not letting me share it?
Uh, you might have to get it back from Russell if you gave it to him.
Okay, hold on. Okay, now how come I can't get you up here? And I have I have Russell's presentation already, but how come I'm not able to get the?
I don't know. Do we skip that tonight? I hate to. Or we just do without flag.
We could do the pledge without the flag.
Yeah, well, let's just stand.
My apologies. I'm sorry.
Uh, let's just stand and do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Weird. I heard it. I heard an echo. I hope I said it right. I was getting confused there. So, all right. Sorry about that. We are unable to to get our flag flying tonight. So and it's kind of an important day being today's December 7, which everyone knows is Pearl Harbor. The remembrance of Pearl Harbor. So um, thank you to all those vets that I might be watching tonight. Appreciate your service to our great country. So with that, we will move to item number four, adopting the agenda. Are there corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to.
Mayor?
Yes.
Need to do roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Nate, go ahead and do a roll call. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Council member Wong is absent. Council member Gra.
Here.
Council member Hatfield.
Here.
Council member Hubbard.
Here.
Mayor Winchell.
Here. All right. Now we will go ahead and adopt the agenda. Corrections or additions? If not, entertain a motion.
Move to adopt the agenda, but Hubbard.
So motion by council member Hubbard.
Second by Hatfield.
Second by Hatfield. Discussion. Hearing none. Council member Hubbard.
Yes.
Council member Gra.
Yes.
Council member Hatfield.
Yes.
Mayor Winchell. Yes, passes four oh with council member Wong absent tonight. Um, moves us to visitor presentation. I have on my list here beyond new beginnings update, Russell St. John. So with that, sir, welcome tonight, and I will turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you very much, everyone. I have our co-founder Jill Engswick is also on the Zoom this evening. Hello, Jill. Thank you. Should I put up a Mike TV? Should I just? Should I share my screen or how to?
Yes, go ahead and share your screen.
Okay, there it is.
Okay, there it's coming.
All right.
All right, there you go.
We have the technology. All right.
There you go.
At it. Well, thank you for a couple of minutes and a lot of you know what's going on. We felt compelled to give it up. A quick update for those who are not familiar with beyond new beginnings. Uh, program to support and nurtures young moms and their children as they gain self-sufficiency and safe, stable housing while being actively involved in a new beginnings high school program post-secondary education and or employment in order to become healthy, contributing members of our community. And why why it's important, this is executive level. The issue is young mothers and mothers to be struggle with homelessness and sometimes food insecurity. There's a need in our community as part of intermediate school district two eighty-eight to to help them. The lack of housing inhibits their ability to support their children and inhibits their ability to become self-sufficient. And there are a bunch of social implications. Each young mom and child dealing with something different. Some are maybe in abusive situations, maybe in a dependency situation, maybe failing with school or suffer from the inability to parent their child. So the mitigation is there's a strong need for our community, community to support these young moms and their children to make sure they can ensure their own success. We, our objective is to provide dedicated housing by this fall, which we're we're there now, including wraparound services such as childcare, social services, public health, and mentoring. And our commitment, this is not a life program, living in the home. It's a commitment to provide them a program to help them launch, whether it's through high school, a technical school, job training, whatever their program is to help them be transformed and empowered to achieve their success. So we're there to help them be successful. And our take takeaway line is where young moms and their children build resilient and success. So here I'll hit a couple of high spots here. We want safe housing for the young moms and their children. And whether they're just working on high school or beyond that, we also want to make sure they have high quality childcare. New beginnings program does provide childcare during the week. Our dream and vision is to provide childcare at night and or on weekends in case they want to work. We want to prepare the moms and advocate for themselves as they find employment. The objective is when you finish your program, you can take care of your family. And having a high school diploma doesn't necessarily enable that. So we want to communicate where these young moms or families, their skills are honed, they're spending time, and they're nurturing each other and helping themselves through both the ups and the downs. The students must be at least eighteen because it'd be low eighteen brings all different kinds of other tough issues. So we decided to start at eighteen plus. We're building on what the new beginnings program has already accomplished over decades. And our objective was to have moms and children, the first ones into the home in the fourth quarter of this year. So I'm going to cover the business side and then Jill's going to cover the program side. So that I can't stress this enough. The community response to this has been amazing, words such as we will embrace this. Um, it's really heartwarming knowing, you know, this is a great place to live. And this this once again demonstrates that Carver County and Chaska are a phenomenal place to live. The program is well underway. We're working with the CDA on a four unit apartment with two beds per per unit. We'll show you a picture and address of that in a few minutes here. So we've got our legal agreements complete, the memorandums of understanding. Uh, two revisions of it are done and we're go. We've got a nonprofit corporation, receive our employee identification number just today. We served Attorney General approval to solicit donations, and we're waiting for our final tax exemption from the the feds. And we expect that within thirty days. We have a great board of directors in place that brings business and social skills to the table from every every walk of service. We have liability and in place insurance. We have a company that said, we're going to help you brand and build out your website, basically help you fundraise with social media, and they're doing all this pro bono. So the little, the little heart you see at the bottom of the screen is the logo that they developed for us. It's the beyond new beginnings, building on a new beginnings program. And that that heart there has two, two meanings behind it. One, if you look at it one way, you can see a mom nurturing a child, maybe enveloped with a blanket. And in another way, you look at it, you see a sun rising, a brilliant sun rising with hope for the future. Um, we've saw advocacy and support from Chaska, Chanas, and churches, local businesses, and family foundations. The Chaska Police Department, thank you for this. Chief Ryan has performed an assessment of the building beyond what's needed for just to be approved for housing. They looked at it from a student's view and and gave us a list of recommendations, things we can do even better to make it more secure for these moms. So it's beyond what the code says. Things around lighting and locks and that. We're really excited about that and get ready to get working implementing that. We've had lawyers review our documents, make sure we're doing things right, give us advice. We have an internet set up and video security will be installed and actually have someone that said they donate that service to us. Um, we have our budget set. Our our goal for budget is about seventy-five thousand dollars through the other next year. That covers some contingencies because we're learning. Here as we launch, we've received thirty-one thousand five hundred with more committed and Jill informed me, we received another check in our appeal box today for another five hundred dollars. Members of our community are resonating when they hear this issue and they want to support it. It's not too hard to sell for support because we all, everyone cares about this issue. So we'll be jumping into social media and using things like services like GoFundMe to really ramp up fundraising in December. And if this phase one home is on North Walnut Street, but you all recognize that building. It's perfect for a starter program. Each apartment has two bedrooms. The bottom floor is a large common area with a kitchen and rest restroom. It's perfect for mentoring the the moms and their children. It's perfect for them to do group dinners together. It's you couldn't, you couldn't spec it out better than than this building, just blocks from the school, of course, close to the park, grocery store, pharmacy, transportation. DDA is covering the liability insurance on a building, all the maintenance, the leases in heat. The state's provided four vouchers for the families. And beyond new beginnings funds everything else, all the programs, some electric, security, and all that. And um, I'm going to turn over to Jill Engswick. Now he's going to talk about empowerment. This is what's important. Everything else is the infrastructure to deliver what these young families need. Jill, could you please walk us through this?
Yeah, we're just at the beginning stages. Now we've asked people to apply, get an application. We want them to have a connection with the new beginnings program at this point, be either a former student or a current student. So that's one criteria we have for them. They have to meet the income guideline for low income housing. And then we have fifty percent custody of their child. So we have so far three moms for sure. And their children and then one more kind of in the wings. So that will be all four apartments hopefully filled by the beginning of next year. And we've got furniture and furnishings and all kinds of start your household items from Grace Church and Furnisher, Love Incorporated. They've all come up with dressers and tables and couches. So the apartments are furnished for them when they get there. Um, Bonaful Basket came to us with, let us know what you need because we want to fill your refrigerator and cupboard for the first couple of weeks. So just your first apartment. And I was just meeting with the girls right before this and they're they're getting used to being there on their own. It was they were excited to be there, but it's pretty overwhelming to be alone in your own apartment for the first time with your child. And they're getting used to it and figuring it out, but appreciating so all the community support they've had since since the beginning. People helped them move in and help them get the items they need. And we have mentors for each student, each person, each student has their own mentor. And those mentors are people from our community who called and said, I want to help. How can I help? Sign me up. I want to volunteer. So we did some training and we've had a few meetings with the mentors to so they can be sort of the number one cheerleader and meet with them a couple of times a week. And then we'll be offering classes once a week also as far as life skills and career development and parenting and healthy relationships, all the things you kind of need to get your feet on the ground. So they can stay with us for one to two years and then they'll be moving on to whatever is next for them. So somebody else can have their spots.
Want to run this one, Jill? Would you like me to do this?
You can go ahead.
Okay, completing apartment preparation. CDA is wrapping up preparation of the main floor that came separately after their current residents moved out. So we should be done with everyone in, we hope in December and have access to the complete building. We need to get the Chaska Police Department recommendations and implement them as fast as we can. And we need and everyone whose coach has said, you're going to learn and adjust, expect the unexpected. You're going to hear and experiencing things you you didn't plan on. And we're ready just to learn and just grow into this. We need to complete all our digital and social media so we can fundraise effectively. And we want to, we really want to make this about community more. My view, if we have lots of ten dollar donations, that'd be amazing to get as much buying and support from our community as possible. And just to, just to share a few little data points on this. There's a farm family remains unidentified at this time until they give me permission. I'll admit somewhere Northern Minnesota heard about this project. Their family got together and came back and gave a check for fifteen thousand dollars. And said, we believe in this project because you're affecting two generations of family, and we'll be back with more support as you progress this. We received based on an article in a Chaska hero last week, we received a check for one thousand dollars from a family in Chaska. Said, we read the story. We believe, please use this money to support the program. We were just blown away by how large of a donation from a single family could be. And last week, we also believe or not, received a donation from a family on the East Coast. Said, we heard about this. There are connections in Chaska and we want to support it. So it's absolutely amazing and the fundraising. Uh, and we still need to get to seventy-five thousand dollars. And then we've got ideas for backyard development to build a little play area with fencing and some safe area for the children. And we need to work with CDA, but we've got some connections where we might get some help with putting this up. Uh, we try to do everything pro bono if possible. That's our middle name. And so we're looking for help there, but we need to work with CDA, make sure they're comfortable with that. And we're getting questions from the community saying, how do we help? So we're actively working. First step is get the moms in safe. And also rapidly after that is how do we engage a community and volunteerism too? So we have an opportunity to help remodel and paint the large group space to make it more amenable, you know, for meetings and mentoring. We've got an opportunity for families to provide meals for when the moms and their children do common meals and spend time together. We've got an opportunity to help build a little playground, install fencing and and clearly one of the big items is to be mentors for these young families. So it's really, really exciting. No, it's, we're ready for question, but we are full of gratitude and we talk about Chaska and Carver County being truly, truly a great place to live. It is. And this is one sign of it, one small example in our community where everyone's stepping up and doing something to help this program. So we we just thank everyone so much.
Really a dream come true for the new beginnings program because for years and years, we've said, oh, we get them to high school. And then they need more support, some of these girls. And what can we do to support them? Wouldn't it be wonderful if we had a little housing program that we could use? And now we do. So it's really wonderful. Any questions?
Awesome. Any questions for anyone, guys? I, oh, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Council member.
Okay, um. Big, I guess the one question I have other than just some comments was the furniture. So I know you guys are furnishing their apartments. And then you said, Jill, that one to two years and then, you know, hopefully they move on to other things. Is the furniture then part of the program or is that something that they take with them?
They'll be leaving the furniture for the next person.
Sure. Okay. Um, just to comment, I love the the logo. It was wonderful to see. I love the two meanings behind it. And um, it sounds like they're already, some of them are already moved in.
Yeah, last week we did and moved in two people. Super exhausting, but really exciting. So it's fun. Yeah.
It was neat, Taylor, because the the trucks moved in with the furniture. The families showed up, some with their families and pretty chill. Jill led through this process, did an amazing job. Lots of moving parts, making sure their wifi works so they could do their schoolwork. Pretty cool.
That is so great. And then just, I just love, you guys mentioned just the shared community piece of it, those girls being able to have each other. Um, and kind of child raised together in a way. Um, that's just amazing, especially right now. I mean, things are so hard. Just I think on every family right now with distant learning and everyone's trying their best and trying to juggle it all. And, you know, being a mom is hard. It's hard under other conditions and it's being a dad is hard, Council member Gra. But it's, you know, your kids are amazing. And so it's just, I just love your program. So thank you so much for your tireless efforts.
Thank you for your support. Well said.
And one, a little funny one, I I have a day job and I'm working with a graduate school in Minnetoka that does mental health, and they heard about this. And they said, hey, we've got some programs. We want to bring an offer for free to help in terms of mental health. Isn't it? And then they say, they sent us a huge box of stuffed animals for the children. And I don't know all the ages of children, if it's appropriate for all of them, but everyone doing all kinds of cool stuff. It's stuffed animals. Who would have thought of that? And we've had offers for clothing, you name it. It's it's really neat. But thanks. Thanks very much, Mayor, for letting us update everyone.
Well, I was just gonna say, everybody likes a stuffed animal periodically. So that that will.
Come to the city council.
Yeah, there you go. Um, I I do want to agree with Council member Hubbard. I, you know, a lot of times when somebody explains to me their their logo, I just kind of go, oh, yeah, but I did all that. So that I thought was was nicely done. Uh, just a couple of questions. Um, so for sure, at at the two-year period, then these folks have to move on or is there so they don't have to? That's the goal is to try to get them out in two years that? To move on?
Everyone has their own plan, you know, where the goal is that people meet their personal goals. And then when they're ready, they can move on. But we don't want to have the impression that they can live there indefinitely. They have to be working toward meeting their goals. And hopefully, within a couple of years, most of them will be ready to move on. Some might be done in one year. Some might be done in three, but about two is about what we're thinking.
Okay, I I just want to clarify what you had said there because when I talked to Russell, I thought they were kind of they they had a plan on how they went about when they would leave. So that's why I just want to clarify that in my in my mind. And for the people watching, you say that two years are not automatically.
Yeah, and Mayor Mark, the the mentor's role is critical here. Their job is to define the plan and help keep the moms on their plan and make sure they're working it. And you know, we're going to be flexible, of course, because life happens, but they're the ones who have to show some tough love too. If you're not working your plan, you have to make a decision, work your plan or you have to leave. And it's tough. So the mentor roles to me are critical of this program's success.
And then and then the other part that I I want to ask the question about is that you're receiving those donations across the United States. Is this program that unique that it's not being done anywhere else?
Very good question. There are inner city models like the Jeremiah program in Minneapolis. But we're not, we haven't seen one like this geared for this age of family. I haven't seen it, Jill. I don't know if you've seen one. We received a request to do this in North Minneapolis already. And we've gotten, this is kind of weird, but we got an inquiry from someone in the federal government about presenting this because they think it might be a model for suburban young families.
Whoa.
I said, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yeah, that's.
We live in Chaska.
Pretty impressive.
Yeah, that's, you know, that, Mayor Mark, you had asked me once a long, longer time ago, is are the teen pregnancy rates down? The answer is you bet. But the needs for those young moms and support with, especially in this environment, is still pretty formidable. So even if the absolute numbers are down, the number needing help like this is there. I can't speak to it in California, Oregon, but I know we have a need. So who knows where it goes, but right now, for young families, safe on a program with mentorship and feeling loved in our community. That's our goal.
That's awesome. Awesome. Well, so I'm going to do one last call. Anyone else? Questions from council?
Just gonna say thanks. I mean, I echo what everything said. I think there are a lot of things that there are a lot of good causes out there and I and I appreciate the time and effort that people go in and put their time, heart, and soul. And and this one is interesting because it really hits home. Um, just because, like I said, I I my sister was a senior in high school and she had twin boys and received, you know, a lot of help and assistance similar to programs like this, but you know, it is, it'd be, I mean, I can't, I mean, I have two boys, as you saw, one of them in the background. I can't imagine the difficulty of being by yourself, for one thing. And let alone, you know, still doing school and still being truthfully somewhat of, you know, a kid yourself. I still think myself as a kid some days too. So just the support and the mentors, these people are stepping up and your time and effort and the fundraisers, just appreciate because it is, is, it's a hard world the way it is. And, you know, when things are, um, you know, where we need help is great and where people put their passions is great. So just thank you for everyone who's donated and involved and and, you know, continue to to raise the community, raise up this this place and these families.
Families really feel the love and support of Chaska, of the community, like these people have done all this for us. Like, why do we deserve this? Like, you do deserve it. And we're so glad you're here and you're going to be able to be successful. So yay.
Well, that's awesome. I think we're all good here. So thank you for the work to do. And it's interesting. Thank you for the update. I I, you know, Russell and I met a while ago and we talked about getting this house and I kind of forgot that it was all happening and and in place. So thank you for reminding and sharing with our with our audience tonight. So um, greatly appreciated and and good luck as you continue forward on your progress, project.
Thanks very much. And hey, Luke, it's nice to see you. Now that DBs is closed, the first time I've seen in a while. Take care, everyone. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Mr. Moderator, is there anyone else on for visitor presentation?
Not that I can see.
Okay. All right, then we will move past visitor presentation and go to consent agenda items. And again, for people watching, consent or items that need our approval, but not necessarily a conversation, but we certainly can have a conversation on any item or pull any item if we need to for action. So with that, I'll open it up. Is there anyone that has a question on anything? Uh, not hearing anything. Matt, I I'm just trying to understand six C. So what are we really doing there?
Oh, six C is, uh, so this is a cell phone tower site.
Right, that's what I thought.
Yeah, so basically their lease was up and they're renewing lease. And so what Nate's been working on over the last few months is getting their lease rate up to what we're seeing the market is. And so what Nate's been working on over the last few months is getting their lease rate up to what we're seeing the market is for other communities in the Twin Cities. So I think it went, uh, let's see, it went from uh, twenty, twenty-five thousand up to thirty-five thousand or twenty-six thousand to thirty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, all right, Matt, you can, you can probably stop there as I'm reading this again, because all, all I read is approved second amendment to site. And I'm like, so that's where I, what are, what are we talking about? Right to bear arms. I didn't get that, but it's the second. But if you read it, approved second amendment to cite, but it didn't talk about it. And that's what didn't make any sense. So, okay.
Good job, Nate.
Maybe I'm reading too much. All right, anyone else have a question on the consent agenda now that I've got that squared away in my brain? All right, if not, I would uh. Uh, ask for a motion to, of approval.
So moved by Councilmember Gra?
Motion by Councilmember Gra.
Second by Hubbard.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard to approve consent discussion. Hearing none, Councilmember Gra.
Yes.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes.
Everyone shuttle, I pass this for all with Councilmember Wong, not with us tonight. All right, uh, moves us to uh, action items. Uh, we'll start with seven A, which is our truth and taxation public hearing.
All right, Mayor, Council, uh, this is once again that time of year, this, obviously, we've been going through this process for the budget for quite a few months. And uh, as we started this process, one of the things I had shared with you is that back in September, uh, the city of Chaska for, in all cities, for our general fund. So our fund that's supported by tax levy establishes a maximum tax levy uh, back by the end of September. Uh, and at that point, basically, the uh, levy is established at its maximum amount. It cannot go any higher uh, than what it was established back in September, but it can go lower. Uh, in between the time period uh, where uh, we established that maximum tax levy and uh, and now. Uh, the county basically takes those preliminary levies, uh, they calculate those out based on properties and send out preliminary property tax statements to uh, property owners across the city and then indicate to them the next steps in the process. And tonight is one of the last two steps in the process, uh, which is called the truth and taxation hearing. And basically, it's an opportunity for us to go through uh, how uh, we establish the uh, the, the tack, proposed tax levy and what that implications uh, would be for the budget and for property taxpayers uh, as a part of that. Uh, this is a public hearing, so uh, it's an opportunity for both the public to be able to make comment uh, on this. Uh, while at the same time that the council being able to discuss as well. We do not take any action uh, tonight on this. We basically take any comments. And then uh, my hope from tonight would be to get enough feedback so that we can come back uh, at the December twenty-first meeting uh, to be able to present to you the, the final budget, uh, which time we do have to approve it at that time. So that we go into the uh, beginning of the new year with our 2021 budget set. I will say before I jump into the uh, presentation, uh, that there was quite a few efforts we took uh, this year uh, with getting uh, public uh, information out. Uh, one of the new things that we did was we developed a, a video uh, segment uh, that we put out. That basically, uh, we did interviews with department heads on sort of the four uh, main components of the, of the budget proposal for this year. To give indication of sort of the whys behind uh, some of the things that we're looking at, as well as getting out some written pieces. And then uh, the paper did uh, a piece as well. So, uh, so we have uh, tried to get out information in, in different uh, manners and social media or website, uh, different places like that. And uh, tonight what I'll do is I'll present to you um, some of the information that's not new to you. Uh, but want to make sure that this is uh, something that uh, the general public has an opportunity to see and understand what's uh, behind proposals. So I'm going to share my screen here. Oh, let's see. Of course, my share button disappeared when I did this here.
Yep, same troubles I may have been having.
Let's see, I'm just going to. In the slideshow here, I am going to just do it like this.
Mr. Mayor, maybe you should open the public hearing. I think Matt's discussion should be part of the public discussion.
Yeah, typically what we do is we typically have me go through the presentation and have any uh, discussion by the council. And then the council would open up the public hearing after that to be able to take a public comment. All right, so.
Is that, is that, Luke, is that what you meant?
Well, I mean, and this is part of the hearing, giving the information. So I, I would prefer if you opened it now.
Yep.
Uh, we certainly can. Like I said, that's how we generally done it. Um, because anyone would have the comment right after the uh, presentation of this. But uh, I can certainly, it doesn't matter, we can certainly open it at this point. So um, so I'll just go ahead and open the public hearing at seven thirty-six.
Okay.
And then Matt, you can go ahead and proceed.
I think, can you guys see the presentation now?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Luke, Luke, you had something you were going to say?
No, no.
Okay.
All right, so this is uh, you know, as, as we've talked about before, what we're talking about tonight is our general fund. So our general fund, we talk about it tonight because it's our tax levy supported uh, fund, uh, our biggest tax levy supported fund. Uh, when you look at the city of Chaska's budget in general, our total budget is right around eighty million dollars. Our general fund budget, which is tax levy supported, is about uh, say twenty million dollars. And our tax levy out of our total eighty million dollar budget uh, is uh, about eleven million dollars. So, you know, and actually, actually a pretty small percentage uh, of what we actually use for revenue uh, to support the services we provide at the city of Chaska comes from uh, property tax levy. But it's an important part because it's sort of, it serves those, the services that we provide uh, that uh, basically are provided to, to everybody and we don't have another revenue source to support. So one of the things I wanted to, to start with is the uh, discussion items that we had from last year's budget. So at this time last year, uh, remind, you know, reminder of the things that we talked about, because that'll lead into some of the recommendations that we have. So uh, one of the things that we talked about is our annual projects funded through the CIP program. So the million dollars that we set aside each year to make sure that we're taking care of things like keeping our roads, trails, parks, uh, shelters, all those kind of things that are aging infrastructure in, in good shape. Uh, continued utilization of our tax levy policy, and I'll go into, to more uh, depth on that. And then uh, if you remember, last year uh, was the first year we talked about initiating a plan to address the findings of our stat, uh, staffing study that we completed two years ago. And the focus was really on the sustainability of our services and the major resource caps, uh, gaps that we current, that currently exist and achieving that sustainability. So uh, it, the um, you know, what we talked about was we had a, a gap of about sixteen positions uh, within the city as well as uh, dollars that had not been allocated towards building maintenance activities in the past. And so we'll talk a little bit more in detail, but it's, I think it's important to start with the context of really some of the, the decisions and, and things that we talked about last year. When we get into the budgeting uh, process, I think it's really important to understand the budgeting objectives and what we're trying to accomplish to this. So, you know, first and foremost, we use our budget to support programs that help strengthen our mission or vision of being the best small town in Minnesota. Uh, everything we do should really revolve back to that. Uh, our existing levy policy, we limit tax levy growth to capture only new growth in the community and expenditure inflation. And only increase our levy beyond that point if new service levels or assets are being added. And then you add them based on what that actual cost is. Uh, we want to maintain our existing high-quality service levels, uh, fully fund maintenance and replacement of our vehicles uh, in a timely manner, as well as our equipment and physical assets on a regular schedule so that we can ensure sustainability of investments we've already made. Uh, fund new programs only after existing necessary programs are funded. Uh, budget, budget to utilize a plan to avoid drawdowns of our city's general fund reserves. And we'll talk uh, more about that as we go through. Fully fund, fund our levy needs for our street reconstruction program. Uh, we've been obviously reconstructing all of our downtown streets over the last ten years. Uh, they're almost a hundred years old with utilities and we almost had those completed. And then develop a long-term budget plan that's sustainable from a resource respect, uh, perspective to support the services that residents expect. So as far as our budget environment, uh, we really couldn't start uh, without uh, talking about the impacts of uh, COVID and the pandemic. So when we were going through this discussion last year, I had never even heard the word COVID. And by March, our, obviously, our world was sort of uh, starting to turn upside down and starting to understand some of the impacts that were going to come from that. So in two thousand twenty, uh, the COVID pandemic crisis started in mid-March and had an immediate impact on our, our revenues uh, in our funds. The most dramatic impact that we saw, and we talked about this obviously last week and, and the, the meeting before that, was in our enterprise recreational enterprise funds like our community center and curling and event center. And primarily because those facilities have been closed down for four and a half to five months uh, over the course of the year uh, because of executive orders. Uh, it also had an impact on the general fund revenues, uh, not necessarily on our tax uh, revenues as, as those uh, were stable. But did have impacts on administrative fees coming from our enterprise funds, building permits and some, some taxes, but not many. Uh, and then uh, to address this, back on July sixth, we did amend our twenty twenty budget to address uh, those realities and basically reduced our general fund budget by about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be able to uh, meet some of the short-term needs uh, that we identified in the budget to be able to make that balance at the end of the year. So some of the things that we did, uh, we did reduce our capital improvement program expenditures by two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That was mainly in park improvements, uh, that uh, we, we kept things like our overlay and seal coat program on our streets, uh, our overlay program on our trails, uh, kept those types, types of things in, but did take out the park improvements. We reduced planned positions and staffing plan implementation. So those are really sort of two separate things. There are some positions that were vacant at the time that we continued to keep vacant instead of hiring and then did not completely fill out our staffing uh, uh, plan, uh, like we had discussed and implemented last year. So that was about a three hundred and eighty thousand dollar savings. We reduced uh, special event expenditures uh, by about twenty-five thousand dollars in park and rec. And that's mainly because we weren't able to have those functions anymore. And then just a number of other uh, expenditures throughout the, the general fund with things like travel and continuing education conferences, things like that, to really make sure that we could keep our budget balanced for two thousand twenty. So as we look forward into twenty twenty-one, I mean, obviously COVID is, is one that uh, we keep an eye on. And again, that has the biggest impacts on some of our enterprise uh, funds like the community center. But it's something we're keeping an eye on across the board. Uh, as far as our environmental factors, so market values, so existing mark, market values increase, uh, increases uh, began to slow in twenty twenty-one. Um, and this was not due to COVID. Um, you know, we typically are about a year to two years behind on market values showing up from, from any impact from, from the past. And this really sort of uh, revolves uh, around uh, uh, not seeing as big a growth in, in existing residential properties and uh, not having as robust a growth uh, in the recent past. So you can see, you know, twenty fifteen, we had eight point two one percent, twenty sixteen, three point one eight, uh, you know, twenty seventeen, seven point eight percent. Uh, last year we saw nine point one four percent. Uh, twenty twenty, we're seeing a two point eight percent overall growth. Uh, so quite a bit lower than what we've seen uh, for market value increases over the last several years. And of that, one point eight percent is related to new growth uh, in the community. The rest is existing properties increasing in market values. Twenty twenty-one is the first year we officially have zero dollars certified from the state government for local government aid. Uh, that's been uh, going away and is now completely gone.
Matt, does that mean we never have to talk about LGA again?
It's always good to remind ourselves how we got somewhere.
If Chris Schultz is watching, he's probably uh, clapping.
Yeah, I know. Probably is.
I, I had to do that. I had to do that for Chris.
I, I was actually thinking about him today and that if he was here, he would be saying that right now. So thank you.
That's, that's uh, for people watching, it's Councilmember Schultz who sat on the council, always struggled with the LGA. Not struggled with it, but because of the ups and downs of LGA.
He got sick of, he got sick of hearing about it.
Yes.
Yep.
All right.
Our administrative fees, so these are uh, fees that we charge from our enterprise funds. So these are our business funds like our electric, water and sewer, stormwater, community center, curling center, town course, par thirty. Uh, all of them have administrative fees that we charge to them so that they don't have to have their own payroll or finance or things like that. They support those functions uh, through an administrative fee uh, which is paid into the general fund. But we did see uh, some of those impacted. Um, you know, one thing that uh, um, actually ended up being relatively good this year was our electric uh, usage. We did initially see some slowdown uh, because of business slowdown activity. But we ended up having a pretty hot year uh, during the summer and ended up having a, a pretty good year in our, in our electric utility. And then building permits has slowed uh, over the past uh, couple of years, especially on large projects. So apart, apartments, commercial, industrial, our residential has remained relatively steady and strong. But there's really on, real uncertainty about sort of the uh, these larger projects. So you know, you might have one big commercial project or a big multifamily project. You know, one of those projects going away can have a pretty dramatic impact on, on your budget. And so uh, that's one area that we're being very conservative in budgeting as we go into uh, twenty twenty-one and, and really uh, into the future to try to take away some of the ups and downs uh, that, that we have with that as well. So when we look at the market values for payable two thousand twenty-one, so these are, these are done on July first of two thousand, uh, two thousand nineteen for uh, two thousand twenty, and then they're for taxes payable two thousand twenty-one. So you can see our overall increase down in that bottom right-hand corner is two point eight percent uh, increase. When you look at where we saw the greatest uh, amount of increase was in apartments, uh, we saw an eight point nine five percent increase in that. About half was from new construction and half was from market value changes. Uh, we've actually seen pretty low vacancies in our apartments in the communities. So this is actually a second year in a row that we've actually uh, seen a little bit more robust growth in our apartments. Uh, residential, we saw a two point two-three percent increase of about half a percent came from just changes in existing property values. And then one point seven-two percent came from new properties. Um, and then commercials saw about three point two percent or three point five-two percent. Uh, about two-thirds of that coming from just existing buildings increasing uh, in value. When we look at how those market values are distributed across the country, you can, or across the city, you can see that residential makes up about seventy-five percent with commercial, industrial, twelve, apartment, seven. And then the egg is sort of the undeveloped property in the community uh, that eventually won't become, won't be egg or most of it won't be. Uh, but this is actually for a um, a suburban community, uh, a really pretty good mix of, of, you know, commercial, residential. You know, with commercial, industrial, you know, we talk about it all the time that we have about uh, fourteen thousand jobs in the community. And we have uh, about eleven thousand homes. So we actually have more jobs in the community than we have homes. So we have a pretty good mixture and this value distribution really sort of shows that as well. This shows sort of the trends that we've seen in market values uh, uh, since two thousand six, so right before the great recession. Uh, you can see that it took from uh, you know, we saw our low point in two thousand twelve. So again, there's about a two-year lag uh between when we see economic activity and when we see the actual impact on market values. Uh, but we saw that dip there, uh, and it took us up until two thousand sixteen to regain all the market value that we lost during the great recession. So almost uh, uh, about eight years uh it took uh to actually regain that. Uh, we've actually been seeing pretty robust growth uh over the last five years. We've seen about five point five-one percent. So the two point eight percent that we're seeing just for next year's taxes is actually pretty low compared to what we've seen uh on average. The two point eight percent market value increase provides us with a three point oh one percent increase in our tax capacity. Uh, so that's how much taxable value we have coming out of that. Uh, this compares to a nine point seven percent increase in our tax capacity last year. So again, we're, we're seeing things uh quite a bit, uh, not as much growth in market values or tax capacity for two thousand twenty-one. This is new construction value growth, um, and you can see even in the recession years, we saw new construction that was occurring. And you know, the, the point I, I, the reason I put this in here is uh, we had four years, two thousand ten, eleven, twelve and thirteen, I think it was. Uh, where we saw a zero percent increase in our tax levy because of the great recession. Uh, ended up getting quite far behind uh because of it. But I think it was important as we were coming out of it to understand that we are adding uh market value, adding uses in the community even during that downturn. And you know, really one of the downfalls of not capturing that new growth when it comes into the community is. Those uses uh cost money to add services to be able to provide to them. And it's really important that at the very least, we're capturing that new value so that they're paying their fair share towards services as well. This was uh Councilman Schultz's favorite slide, the local government aid uh slide. And I still put this in here because I think it really tells a story. Um, two thou- two thousand three, we had over a million dollars uh that we used to receive from the state of Minnesota for local government aid. And you can see between two thousand three and two thousand eight, it pretty much went down to zero. Uh, we did pop back up and sort of about four, five, six years ago and saw a little bit uh getting up as high as about five hundred thousand dollars in two thousand fifteen. And then once again, lost that and went back to zero. And the reason I really bring this up and I think it's important is, you know, one of the things that we've. Two, two of the big initiatives that we've talked about over the last few years has been our CIP program. Uh, which we spent four years adding a million dollars to be able to take care of, of, of depreciating assets that we had. And then falling behind on our staffing. And you know, one of, one of the things I always sort of point back to is, is really this time period when we saw that loss. Uh, in LGA and one of the same things that was happening at that same time is we were seeing very large increases in, in property tax values. Up until two thousand eight. And so during this time, so, some of what we, well, everything we lost in LGA was sort of mitigated by uh new market values uh coming in. But we also had new uses that we had to take care of too. And so um, we never really did uh make up for that loss of LGA over those times. And that's where we started to really start to fall behind uh on, on being able to keep up with some of those basic things. So when we look at building permit revenue, uh, I go back to two thousand one and you can see sort of where the peaks and valleys have been. Uh, you can obviously see the dip was in the uh great recession time period. But then after that uh sort of worked itself out. Uh, after two thousand, uh, by two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve is when we saw the two twelve medical center. Uh, pop up and we actually really started to see some pretty robust growth after that, probably uh prior to when most communities started seeing some of the rebound. And have had some pretty decent years, the last couple of years uh have really uh been significantly less. Uh, and that's why we're consequently seeing less increase in property values now. And as you can see, this lower number here is what we did uh for two thousand twenty. Uh, with reducing that budget to address uh covid uh related issues. And we're going to come in uh pretty close that actually will end up coming in just a little above. Uh, what we brought that budget down to and pretty close, we'll end up coming in pretty close to where we're recommending that we set the, the uh building permit. Uh, value in our budget uh from here going out into the future. And really what we're suggesting with this is that sort of like with LGA, let's, let's take away this uncertainty of peaks and valleys. Uh, this amount that we show budgeted here uh really sort of reflects what robust residential growth occurring in, in the community has. And really everything above and beyond that is uh commercial, industrial growth and some of the larger projects we, we see. Uh, instead of uh seeing one large project go away and having budget issues. Uh, the strategy that we would recommend is let's set uh a lower amount for the budget. And then when we do see those projects come in, that can be another tactic to help us build up our general fund reserves uh as we go forward. Uh, just to give people a sense of sort of where we've seen population growth and where we expect it to go into the future. Uh, again, you know, we, we uh saw very robust growth in the early two thousands uh before two thousand eight. And you can see two thousand nine, we saw very little growth, two thousand nine, ten, eleven. Uh, but we're seeing pretty steady growth of about a hundred and twenty to a hundred to a hundred and twenty new homes a year. And uh, by the end of, of sort of this planning period, we expect we're going to be close to twenty-eight thousand people. And uh, when we're fully developed, we should be at about that thirty-five to thirty-six thousand people. Uh, which uh more than likely will be in about twenty years from now.
So.
Yep.
Uh, do we have a, we have a projection for two thousand twenty, how many houses were built? Is it going to be that one tw- one hundred?
One hundred, yeah, we'll, we'll be pretty close to that one hundred. Uh, you know, we, we're going to end up coming in pretty close to, to what budget is. And one of the things I also sort of double check this with is obviously, you know, this is looking at the number of homes and it's saying two point five people are coming in per home. Well, some homes have five, some homes have one. Um, uh, when we got the Met Council estimate uh for this year, we were really close. I'd say we were then two or three hundred people of what they had.
Okay, cause I, it just, I, I was in Southwest Chaska today and there are so many. Uh, foundations going up there, there are foundations in and building on that. I just, I thought we'd surpassed that one hundred number by uh quite a few, but maybe not. Cause that's really primarily where most all of our um, you know, construction is happening at this.
Yeah, most of it's happened there. Obviously, we have some pockets uh going on around like Clover Ridge neighborhood. Um, we have uh the development that I live in. Uh, we have the new townhomes that now uh development has started on up at Pioneer and Clover Ridge Drive. But most of the bulk of activity is happening in Southwest.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. So uh, then we get to our inner uh, our electric fund, our electric fund makes a, a pilot payment. So it's basically a payment in lieu of taxes uh each year of ten percent uh to the general fund. And one of the great things for our electric utility certainly really sort of twofold is one, uh, our rates. Uh, this, this last year, our rates were between nine to ten percent lower than XL. Uh, for our residential customers, when you look at uh, last year, we were actually about seven to eight percent lower. Uh, so we've actually gotten better uh with that as, as uh we've gone forward. So we have uh very low uh electricity costs in, in the community, a high reliability because we take care of it ourself. Uh, but at the same time, we do a ten percent contribution to the general fund to keep our taxes lower. And you know, when I get to the end and show our property tax comparisons compared to other communities. It, it really stands out uh when you look at we're in the top ten lowest or. Depending on how you look at it, we're, we're in the lowest ten uh cities in the, in the metro area uh for tax levies per capita. And this is, this definitely has an impact uh on that. So you'll see in two thousand twenty, we're about four point one. Uh, two thousand twenty-one, we're going to be at about four point three million dollars. That will be a payment in lieu of taxes. Now, the reason for these, uh, and they're also, we call them enterprise funds too, uh, or I, I'm sorry, uh. Now that the name's slipping my mind. Noel, you got pilot not drilled in my head, our franchise fee, that's it. So they're sometimes called franchise uh fees, uh, we also have a gas franchise fee too. Uh, from, from Center Point, the purpose of them is that, that the general government goes out and purchases right-of-way. Uh, for roads uh throughout the community and utilities use the right-of-way in those roads. Uh, to be able to uh carry their utilities around and, and Chaska Electric, even though it's a city function. Uh, is still its own sort of separate enterprise fund business and just like other utilities needs to be able to contribute to that. And these pilot payments are basically a, a payment in lieu of taxes to help uh recognize that, but also contribute to uh the taxes in the community in general. So uh, this gets us to the discussion items for the two thousand twenty-one general fund budget. Sort of the, the main items that we focused on during the planning process. So the major baseline discussions uh that uh, uh, that we have for two thousand twenty-one. That really are coming out of the uh discussions that we've had in past years. So the first one is continued utilization of our tax levy policy. So we limit our tax levy growth to capture only new growth in the community and then expenditure inflation. Only increasing beyond that point if new uh service levels are added in the community. Uh, at one point in time, we did have a policy that basically uh was meant to keep our tax. Uh, uh, rate uh the, the same. Uh, we saw two issues with that, you know, first of all, when you go back to some of those uh years before the great recession. We could see, you know, twelve to twenty percent increases in our tax levy. It would keep the tax rate the same, um, but people's taxes would go up pretty dramatically just because of the increase in market values that we saw in the community. The other one was the impact that we saw during the great recession where we actually saw decreases in market values across the community. And keeping that policy, our tax levies would have gone down for four years in a row pretty significantly. Uh, which would have, would have had a pretty big impact considering we are already very low. Um, in, in comparison to, to most cities in the Twin Cities. Uh, the second one is continued implementation of our capital improvement program and the impact of revenue loss on the complete implementation of this for two thousand twenty-one. Uh, and then the last one, uh, that sort of is a holdover from our discussions last year is the staffing study implementation. And the impact of the economy on timing of this implementation. So you know, as I've mentioned previously, some of the first year of the program that we did start implementing last year. It's, it was meant to be a four-year rollout, we did put some of it on hold last year. And really as we discussed and, and some decisions we've already made back when we set the preliminary tax levy. You know, is it the right time now to really be moving forward with the implementation of the second year of that? Or should we, should we be putting that on hold? And then the other issues that uh are, are ones that we talked about that are more uh issues that popped up over the last year. Uh, one of them is needs identified in our recent policing uh review. So um, we did do uh, uh, I shouldn't say we, Chief Cybert, who's uh on this call too. Uh, put together a pretty extensive effort to uh gather input from the community on our uh policing activities. And uh, this was really in the wake of the riots that we saw uh in early summer. And uh, you know, some of the issues uh nationwide that were coming out of that of things uh for police departments to really focus on. So there was a number of issues uh that were identified in that, that we really felt were important things to be able to focus on. And we'll get into more depth as we, we go further in this presentation. And then the last one says needs identified in a recent financial rating review by S and P Global Rating for our uh general fund. Uh, so for our tax levy-supported geo uh, uh, bonds. Um, you know, one of the, the things that we have always uh had some, we've always had a little bit more flexibility on what we can have. Sort of stashed away as our general fund reserve and, and still make the rating agencies feel comfortable. Because we have enterprise funds like our electric fund and uh other utilities. They're giving us a little bit more flexibility on cash flow. So a lot of cities, like when I came from Winstead, most of our uh revenue came from tax levy. And tax levy only gets paid to cities twice a year. It gets uh paid once in the summer and once in December. And you really needed to have reserve at a certain level to be able to keep yourself uh, you know, uh, with, with proper cash flow throughout the entire year. S and P is really focusing much more on this now, especially because of covid and the um, and the uh, um. You know, financial issues that have come out of that and made it pretty clear that that's something we need to increase our balance. To be closer to what they would expect most cities to have their general fund balance at, which would typically be about thirty-five percent, thirty-five to forty percent. Of uh the general fund budget. And so we'll talk about uh steps that, that we really think we need to take to uh deliberately move that up. To really make sure that we keep our rating as high as possible. Uh, so our operational tax levy policy, again, we look at new growth and uh inflation as the two big things that drive that. Uh, and then only add if we add a new program or service. For two thousand twenty, the new growth in the community is one point eight-five percent with inflation running at about one point six-eight percent. So our policy uh would say that uh from an operational perspective, uh, we would increase our levy by three point five-three percent. Uh, as these are really the factors uh that impact our ability to be able to provide the same services we provided the previous year. But also be able to accommodate for increase in costs of purchasing materials. Uh, or staffing uh cost increases, uh, plus being able to provide them for new residents and businesses. Uh, so with an increase in our tax capacity at three point oh three percent, this would mean if we just followed this baseline tax levy policy. Our rate would go up by a half a percent. Um, but that uh again would be without adding any new programs such as the staffing study implementation. So our capital improvement program, uh, so uh, uh, from two thousand fourteen to two thousand seventeen, the city worked uh for four years. Four years to fully implement this new pro- program and fund uh the million-dollar gap that was identified. And really it was, you know, focusing on those things that maintain our existing assets and, and really keep them great for the future. So one of the issues I've already talked about is in two thousand twenty, this current budget year, because of a decrease in revenue that we had coming into the general fund. We did need to amend our budget and reduce it by two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to balance that budget. If we utilize, so this is going into two thousand twenty-one, if we utilize our normal tax levy policy. Uh, a reduction uh in planned rev- and we see the reduction in planned revenue for two thousand twenty-one. We're projecting that we'd need to cut at least three hundred thousand dollars of our capital improvement program to balance the budget. And this was, this was one of the discussions that we had back in September. So if we did that, um, you know, we'd propose to keep all the things like our streets and trail overlay projects and not fall behind on those. But we start to really uh fall behind on those other aspects. So we talked about Cortina Woods Playground was one that was scheduled for replacement last year. You know, it's, it's one thing to delay for one year, but then when you start getting into multiple years of delaying these, they're already behind. And it just compounds on top of each other. So then you become behind on your entire schedule and things start to deteriorate and become unsafe. And like in Cortina Woods Playground, uh, we did uh a beyond the budget segment out there and, and. Uh, Brian Jung, our public works director was showing in the tape how we have to have plywood over a couple of the slide uh holes coming down. Because we uh, because the slides are broken and we, we just can't safely have people going down. And so it's stuff that you don't necessarily notice from a distance, but when you get up close, you start to realize what kind of an impact not keeping up with that type of, of uh, of maintenance uh has. And really it becomes, you know, again, a decision if we're okay with that or if we feel that we need to fully. And really it becomes, you know, again, a decision if we're okay with that, or if we feel that we need to fully fund this to not fall behind our schedule. Which again, has a cumulative effect over years of falling behind. So staffing study implementation, again, last year, we talked about the the program. Identified 16 employees currently short across the city. About a $1.5 million gap and also identified about a 500,000 gap towards building maintenance activities. During last year's budget cycle, the council did decide to address by implementing of this program over a four year period, which basically had. $375,000 a year for four years coming in to support from tax levy, new positions. Plus $125,000 coming in from our enterprise funds to support that and our building maintenance activities. So last year I did indicate that we had to cut the program short to balance a budget in 2020. Before that, we were able to fill three building maintenance positions and we kept the $125,000. In the budget to support the building maintenance activities. But again, did need to delay the remainder of the program, which cut about $100,000 from the staffing. Study plus there was some other positions that were were vacant that we didn't fill. I can say that I think it's very good that we got these building maintenance positions funded. Because we've had some pretty significant projects that we've had to do this year. Already and I think this has been a huge addition. To to the city and our services we provide, especially with aging facilities. Re-implementing this plan in 2021 would require us to again add an additional 300,000, $75,000 to the levy. And you know, as we talked about during the. September session is, you know, is. Is this year the right year to do it on 2021 when things are just uncertain? And basically at. At that time, you guys did make the decision to not include. The second year of the staffing implementation. In that, so we did not include that number in our preliminary tax levy. So in order to do that at this point. We'd either have to cut other services. That we had planned on funding to do this, or we'd have to wait into until 2022. To re-implement the program, which as you guys indicated at that time, was what you guys felt most comfortable with. So. That one, we did make a pretty strong statement back in September. That we'd put a hold on on that new staffing analysis or study until 2022. I talked about newly identified issues in the police department. So the police department. Went through a pretty in-depth community engagement process. To review the entire department, including policies, procedures, training, staffing levels. This has been occurring I over the last several months, actually, and it also included a. Not only the public engagement and meetings in the summer, but we also did have a survey. That that went out that sought feedback from the public. And this is really good information that that we got back and we will be having Ryan. Chief Cybert come back and give a presentation at a future council meeting to talk about. All the things we got as far as feedback in that survey. But some of the things that came out of this is sort of more immediate things that we felt really needed to to be addressed sooner and later. One of them is the need for one additional officer to allow for direct supervision during most. Of our scheduled shifts. And I'll talk about it that right now, we only have about 55% of our shifts. That are actually supervised by a by a sergeant who would be a field supervisor in the police department. This ultimately, we should have a sergeant on every shift and at some point in time be. At 100% of that. Adding one additional sergeant to this would give us a capability to getting up to a little over 70% of our shifts being covered by a sergeant. Which really gets to a number of things. It gets to accountability, having people out there that have a little bit more experience that can help with difficult situations. We've seen a lot of turnover from retirements in our police department over the last few years. So we have newer police officers and we need mentors out there. And so this is one that really stood out as as immediate need. Another one is a need to reengage in the West Metro Drug Task Force. We've seen a pretty significant increase in the use of narcotics in the community and it's caused some significant issues in different parts of the community. We are not currently a member of the West Metro Drug Task Force. We had dropped out a few years ago for financial reasons. We really feel that that we need to get ourselves reintegrated back into that to be able to draw on the resources of multiple agencies to be able to address. Some of those issues in the community. Another one thing that was identified was a need to provide additional training. To all of our sworn officers to be able to have a greater skill set towards de-escalation of situations and crisis intervention. So basically, and you'll see the recommendation there is to have all of our sworn officers go through 40 hours of critical incident training. And then the last one is need to reinstitute the use of the vitals application. So this is. An app that basically gives us information that can be critical to understand about different suspects that we might encounter. So. If somebody was autistic or if somebody had a language barrier or was, you know, wasn't able to communicate. Or might have different triggers that that set them off. You know, those types of things can become really critical to understand for an officer as they're coming into a situation. So they know the things, what they should do and what they shouldn't do. What could potentially escalate a situation without necessarily meaning to. So these are all areas that we sort of see as as sort of immediate things that we think. You know, should be addressed and that would that need identified would require an additional $100,000 in the budget for this year. Think I talked about most all this. Yeah, I I addressed that in the last slide. I'll talk a little bit more here about West Metro Drug Task Force. So. So again, there is a growing drug issue in the community and in 2019 of the 55 total narcotics investigations in Carver County, Chaska represented 24 of those cases. And. The. Even though we represented 24 of those cases, we're we're, you know, because the sheriff's office takes care of the rest of the county, we're the only agency that isn't part of the West Metro Drug Task Force. And so you can imagine if you don't participate in it. You you don't, you don't get as much attention from from their resources. We're we're actually recommending ultimately what you want to have done is you'd like to have an officer. That's embedded into being a part of the West Metro Drug Task Force so that they can work directly with them and we give a staffing resource. We don't think we can afford that at this time, but we do think we need to reinstitute participation with them. And then work our way up to that. So it's not terribly expensive to do that, but it would be an $8,400. Contribution to get back enrolled in that annually. And then again, we wouldn't want to add an officer to their fleet until we actually would add another officer to City of Chaska because. We're already sort of thin on the the staff to begin with. And wouldn't want to add or take away from something we have in the city to put towards this, but it is something I think we need to work towards. And then our general fund balance initiative. So during our financial rating process this year in preparation to sell bonds, S and P did reaffirm our rating of a double A. However, instead of issuing a stable outlook, they rate us having a negative outlook. And really this gets back to that fund balance number. And you know, really saying that even though in the past, we've been able to really rely a little bit more on other our other funds like electric utility. Other utilities, things like that to be able to count towards our general fund reserve balance. Especially with some of the things happening with COVID and just uncertainties in the market that. That not is not going to be sufficient for them anymore. And that if we don't work to take active steps to. To to build up our general fund reserve that we could see our our rating decrease. And so. You know, I put in here that, you know, we saw in our last bond sale, having the rating that we have got us rates of under 1.2%. And save us over $1.8 million in our refunding of our issuances that we had. And, you know, we looked at the 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 cost of what would happen if we had a lower downgraded rating. And over that, the the course of of the debt that we have out there, it can be a significant increase in cost. Over time, it can be, you know, 500 to a million dollars with the number of debt issuances we have out there. And so this is one that really. You know, to me is probably the most important one that we address in the in the short term. And what we're recommending for this year is that that we take levy. Or levy an additional $100,000 to go towards the general fund reserves. And then also $200,000 coming from our enterprise enterprise funds to start this process. We really think this is one that we need to show progressive years of working towards and you'll also see us come back in 2021. With a policy of both what our target should be specifically. And also what actions would the council take if we saw our general fund balance go down? What type of actions would we take in the next budget process? Those types of things will will give the rating agencies much more security as we're going forward. And then just other things to consider for 2021. 2021 is a new employment contract year. It's very clear that there's realities in the economy that are driving down salary increases. We did budget for 1.5% as opposed to the 3% increase in salaries like we originally showed. We also. Are recommending a 0% increase in our employer contribution towards our our benefits for this year. That becomes a little bit easier to deal with because we did see a decrease, a pretty significant decrease in our. In our health insurance costs for 2021. And so that really, even though we wouldn't increase that, that actually will have a a positive impact on on the bottom line for employees because their out of pocket costs will go down. Equipment replacement, we actually bonded for that in 2020 to include. Equipment and vehicles in 2021 with the life inspectancies over seven years. That's a requirement of using those equipment certificates. And so we've we've already replaced most of our equipment. We do have a a few items such as an inspection vehicle. And two Bobcats in 2022 that we'd need to replace. That weren't part of that bonding issuance because they don't have the same lifespan as the other equipment. We would plan on keeping the $125,000 of building maintenance dollars that we got into the budget last year as part of our staffing study. But again, would hold off on increasing that up to 250 until we. Did our second year of the staffing study, which now we're saying we we delay until 2022. And then plan to keep the levels, service levels constant in our general fund. So as far as the options, if you remember back in in September, basically what I did is I sort of broke it down into. The different options and what the the impact to property taxpayers would be. So option one was basically just our base plan. So just levying for the new growth and inflation, which is 3.53%. If we did this. You know, probably the bottom line is that last bullet point, what we would not be able to fund under this option. Is $300,000 of the CIP program. We'd still accomplish all the the streets and trails and things like that, but but would lose out on things like park replacement. The staffing study implementation obviously would be delayed. One thing it doesn't show in here that should is that we would not be able to fund our program for. Addressing our our general fund reserve balance and then, oh, I guess I did put it, we wouldn't be able to address the police or fund balance issues. So the impact of just our base level. Policy. Our median value home in 2020 in Chaska is $281,000. That median value home in 2021 went up to $285,000. Last year's taxes on that existing home would be $808. And the 2021 taxes on that same home would be $829. So it's. A $21 annual increase or a $1.75 per month. Option two is really looking at being able to replace that $300,000 loss for the CIP program. If we did option one and option two, we would not implement the staffing study, nor would we address the policing or fund balance issues. In that scenario, that same home would see a $46 annual increase in taxes or $3.83 per month. Under option three, this is saying that we would do 300,000, do our base plus $300,000 for our CIP program and $100,000 to address our fund balance reserve. Under this scenario, the two things that would not be accomplished would be our staffing study, nor our police issues. Under this example scenario, that same home would be a $55 annual increase. Or $4.58 per month. Option four would basically be to do the base plus the CIP. The fund balance plus the $100,000 for the policing efforts. We would not do the staffing study as part of this and that would be $64 annual increase or $5.33 per month. And then option five would be if you did everything. And under that. We saw that'd be a $97 annual increase or $8.08 per month. This option again is off the table at this point because we did not establish a preliminary levy to accomplish this. We established a preliminary levy to accomplish the base, the CIP. Our fund reserve balance and policing issues, but we back in September decided no on the staffing study. The only way we could do this at at this point is if we cut expenses in other areas. So just some reminders of things, you know, that we have to think about and and I think I put this out here more for saying we have to be. Cautious about delaying things too much because we have a lot of things in the future in the horizon. So obviously, we continue to have the staffing needs study issues, even though we're not implementing this year. So we have to be able to address those at some point. We have city facility needs with most of our facilities having been built in the mid 80s. And not really seeing significant renovation sense and and just space needs in general that we've talked about before. We've talked about the future of of a new library. And, you know, again, it's, we just have to be careful about making sure that we don't get too far behind. Now, the good news is, you know, I think we provide excellent value. To our residents for taxes. So basically what this chart looks at is. It doesn't show all 86 because I couldn't fit it on there, but it basically shows 86. Of the metropolitan municipalities out there. What the tax levy is, what the population is, so we can look at what's the tax levy per capita in each of those communities. So you can see Chaska here is number 79 out of 86. And so we're we're in. The top 10 or the bottom 10 lowest tax levies per capita in the metro area. And we've been here for a very long time. This Chaska has always had very low tax levies per capita compared to. Other municipalities. You can see I did throw in here just to give some comparison to surrounding cities where Chan Aston Falls. So Chan Aston Falls at $446 per capita. And I think an important thing to point out with Chan Aston is they don't have a police department and we do. So we do have additional expenses or additional services that we provide. And I think I calculated, well, you can see that. This is assuming that we would implement our tax levy for this year and that everybody else saw a 0% increase in their levy. I believe when talking to Chan Aston, I believe they were at about a 2% increase in their levy. So you can see that, you know. We just just looking at what we're proposing compared to where they're they're going to be at about a three. $350,000 difference. You look at Victoria is. Right sort of towards the center at $539 per capita and Carver's at 608. So we continue to be the lowest tax levy per capita. In Carver County and again, in the top 10 lowest in the Twin Cities. And again, in the top ten lowest in the twin cities.
Matt, Matt, can you back up a slide?
No.
This one, this one?
Nope, yeah, this one. If you notice there, uh, of those lower cities, we are by far the largest, you know, uh, overall levy, so you can tell that there are a lot smaller communities than, than we are. I mean, some of them, Lauderdale didn't even hit a million dollar budget, so.
Yeah, and I think the other important thing to point out with these is a number of these are, you know, like North Oaks is more like a neighborhood association. Falcon Heights contracts all their services with Ramsey County. Uh, so a lot of these, uh, you know, Lauderdale, I think does, uh, quite a bit of contracting of their services too. So a lot of these communities are small enough where they're not even really providing their own services or contracting for those. So I, I think that's a good point is, um, you know, we, we really sort of stand out from, from any of them in sort of that, that top or lowest grouping as far as, you know, where we stand from, from a size perspective. You know, White Bear Lake is probably the closest. Any other questions on this?
That's it. I just wanted to point that out.
Um, so the, uh, I think I've probably given enough information. I'll, I'll skip ahead to, this sort of shows, uh, where our budget, uh, would be from a revenue perspective, uh, with the, uh, with the proposed budget. So this would be, the proposed budget is assuming that we do the options of the base, the CIP, addressing the fund balance reserve and all of the policing. And then this shows where the, uh, where the expenditures would be. So you can see it's about, it's a little over a six and a half percent increase to be able to accommodate those. As far as action again tonight, um, this is the annual truth and taxation hearing, so there's no action, uh, taken tonight. Just discussion and input from the council and the public. And again, one of the things I'd like to be able to accomplish tonight is to be able at least get good direction from the council as far as what you'd like to see come back a, at the meeting on the twenty-first, so we can accommodate that. Um, but then on the twenty-first, we'd not only adopt our, our two thousand twenty-one budget for the, uh, general fund and set our tax levy, but we'd also be establishing our budgets for our enterprise funds, uh, that night as well. One last thing I'll point out is when we do this analysis here, we own, uh, we look at all of our tax levy supported, uh, funds. So we look at our, uh, we basically have three, uh, different funds that we're supporting with this tax levy. Whoever, general fund, which also encompasses sort of our equipment acquisition fund. We have our economic development authorities, so this includes our EDA, and we also have Mount Pleasant Cemetery, which we own and operate. All the rest of the cities, this is looking at just their general fund tax levy. It does not include their EDA. So we want to be able to show the entire impact of taxes to the residents and then how it compares to just the general fund of other communities. Any questions?
Questions for Matt or anyone? Noel, whatever. Somebody muted and not talking, or is, are we just not, are we good? Matt, can you unchair, please?
Yep.
And I can see everybody, that helps. Thanks. And, you know, for, for the general public, uh, we have been looking at this and looking at this and looking at this. So this is a, um, you know, a very quick overview of, uh, what we've been looking at. Um, I hope you had the opportunity to see the beyond the budget segments. We wanted to be very clear this year about, uh, we are raising taxes. There's no hiding and doubting about it. And it's about being able to keep up with the things that we have worked hard on trying to move forward and that being maintenance and care of our streets and care of our parks that we, uh, I will, I will say, and I, I'll have to take the brunt of that, but the fact that we have not been good about maintaining this stuff, we haven't put the money forward. And so we have been working strong and at, at least I know in my last eleven years since I've been here that working on trying to fix infrastructure. And I think you could see, uh, from what we've done and, and adding the CIP and all the things about the, um, effects of that and how we move forward by looking at what we've done in the downtown and the streets and what that looks like and, and being able to now go in and have a actual capital improvement for park projects. You know, like we talked about, we got a, we got a sled and our, our slide in one of the places that got plywooded on to cover it. Um, so you know, these things need all that. And I know Brian's worked real hard on, on putting that, uh, CIP together to keep those, uh, playground areas safe as we can for, for the kids and, uh, residents. So, um.
Well, and just so the council knows, I have the three people who got interviewed in the beyond the budget segment with us tonight. So Ryan, Noel and Brian, all three got interviewed in that. So if there's detailed questions, they know how to answer.
But I, I, I just wanted to be clear that we, like I said, again, this is not something we take lightly. It seems like, you know, we put a, an hour presentation on our budget, but it's really not. It's exactly one hour since we started. It's eight thirty-six and we started at seven thirty-six. So I, I just want people to know that we don't take this lightly. We have been studying it. We have talked about it and, and we have seen these numbers multiple times. So, um, with that, I'm going to open it back up if the council has anything or, uh, Brian, Noel, or, or Chief Ryan, if you have anything, um, uh, feel free to, uh, to, uh, chime in at any point before we go ahead. And the public hearing is open before we go to, uh, public comments, so I'll leave it at that. Council, anything?
I was just going to say that, you know, um, when we set the preliminary, the, taking the staffing one was, was pretty, pretty easy decision. You know, for me personally, just as most businesses are really looking at head counts and everything like that with the pandemic and crystal ball wasn't there and the crystal ball still isn't here, and I still think that was the right decision to do. Um, you know, I don't think any of us expected in December that we, you know, things were dramatically changing, shockingly enough. Well, it dramatically changed the other direction maybe, uh, since we last met, unfortunately. But I, I don't think we were thinking things would change and we'd regret that, and it's certainly been true. So I think that's still the right decision. You know, I echo the comments of the mayor about infrastructure and safety, uh, being a critical piece to it with the streets and maintenance. Slides, um, you know, I think if you think of things people have taken notice of in a pandemic is probably park equipment and street conditions if they're walking more or sidewalk conditions and stuff like that. So I think, uh, you know, public safety and, you know, infrastructure are critical needs. And, and to me makes, made sense and still makes sense to continue to, to, you know, uh, support that with the appropriate funding.
I just, I had one really quick question, uh, in regards to LGA, I know.
Councilor and Shult says no.
So it, you said it, this year is the, or two thousand twenty-one will be the first year it's officially zero. But from the graph, it looks like in two thousand eighteen and nineteen it was zero, but.
It's, it's, it's hard on a graph that goes up to a million to show like seven thousand dollars.
Okay, I, I figured there had to be some sort of simple answer like that, but I was like, I better just double check to make sure I was understanding that correctly.
Yeah, we, we got something. It was just really minor though. This is the first time we've absolutely got zero.
Okay, all right. I just, that was like probably my only question, but, um, echoing the, uh, thoughts of council member Gra and our mayors. Uh, we have spent a lot of time talking about this, and so it wasn't like I was just breezing through everything. But, um, I feel a, along the lines of the same way as, as the other ones I've shared. Uh, I like the stair step approach. It's really hard to say, yes, we're gonna raise taxes at a time like this. Um, don't want to do any more burden to any financially to any other households, but understanding that, you know, maintenance and, um, you know, keeping a community, uh, safe and well-running does cost money. And I feel like for what we're doing, the services that we're providing, it's, uh, you know, it's a, it's a good investment in that. It's not a frivolous spending. You know, we're being good stewards in, in that, um, in that increase. And, you know, that graph, uh, that the mayor had you bring up, uh, the chart of the cities. And you think about it, you know, you look at the population sizes of some of those other comparable cities. I, I realize that not all the cities are on there. It's kind of amazing when you look at like, uh, Chaska is what nearly twenty-seven thousand residents? And you look at, um, other communities that, you know, you would think are larger, like Hopkins, like population size, and they're not. And you think about what is our mission statement for Chaska to be the best small town? And you think about just the physical population size of our town and how we still have it feeling and we have that small town community, even though we have a larger population, you know, by number than Hopkins. And there's something to really be said about that. And I think that, that this and the, the stair step approach to having the, um, you know, you giving the four options, that was just, it's a, it's a great, you know, way of us kind of being able to choose and, you know, make those good decisions. So that's my two cents.
And I, and I would like to comment on that. I, I want to thank, thank staff because I, I know that this was, this was different. Uh, adding, adding the à la carte way to do the budget was completely different than we've ever done before. We've just come in with, with, uh, a, a number and that's what we did. But this, this way that we did it with the ability to choose the items that we felt that were the most important and most crucial for us was completely, um, out of the box, I'll, I'll say. And, and maybe it's normal somewhere else, but it's not normal here in Chaska. So I, I think that I just want to, want to say again that that's just something about how we approached the budget and the thoughts about the budget is, is that we needed to make sure that we hit the critical pieces. And anything that we could call fluff was taken out, um, by us not approving those items. So I think that doing it this way really gave us an opportunity to really have, we had some pretty lengthy conversations, um, regarding the five different options that we had available and how to pick and choose. So I want to say thanks to the staff for putting that together for us. I, I think in, in the craziest year, uh, that I know of in my not quite sixty-six years, but in a couple of days it'll be sixty-six years, that this is probably the craziest times that we've probably gone through in, in, uh, my lifetime and to be able to come up with that. And, and it's, like I said, we talked about it earlier about how critical it is that we, if we can stay on task with some things. I think everything that we have chosen to do in this budget are so critical and it's about looking forward. And that's our goal as a council. Our goal is, as a council, isn't here to make sure that, that Brian Jung isn't spending ten thousand dollars on a park fund. That's not our job. That's Matt's job to make sure that's, um, our job is the council's look out to the future. And I think that these items that we are doing here is clearly that we are looking at the future because we could have not supported adding money to the general fund. And as we move forward, that will cost us more money as we move forward. And I, so I, I just think all of these, the CIP, every year you, uh, you, you stop that progress, it's going to take that much longer. We talked about it in two thousand ten, that a lot of times when you hit these, it takes almost five to six years. I remember Matt preaching that because I just knew on the council, it takes five or six years to get us back to, back to a normal level. And I watched that. I remembered that. And it took almost a full six years to get us back to that. So if you, if you take any setback, it takes, even though we think it's only a year, it's not a year. It's multiple years because something else can happen down the road where you set something else back. So, um, I, I just, again, I, thanks for, for making those options available. I think it made it easier and it, it is certainly way more transparent than we've probably been before in a budget. So thanks.
Um, I'll, I'll avoid being redundant, but pretty much everything that's been said. And I just think that the people in Chaska, our residents take a lot of pride in their community. And, uh, you know, where we've moved with the budget, I feel really good about and that, um, our residents would feel good about. And, you know, like council member Hubbard said, you don't, you don't want to raise taxes, especially at a time like this. But I think our residents take so much pride in our community that, that they would, you know, if we put all twenty-seven thousand on the council together, they would, for the most part, agree with us and what we're doing. So I think that's, that, um, is good. You know, doesn't feel great to raise taxes, but I think just the pride that our community has, um, is reflected in how this budget's been done. And again, thank you to staff. I agree with, um, Mayor Winchell, that it's just, it's been very transparent and very, um, in a year that would be really hard to do the budget. It, it felt a little bit easier to kind of be able to look at it from all those different sides. So, uh, thank you to staff.
Good point. Thanks.
I was just going to, I think to me, you're, they're all right. That yellow, the slide with all the city comparison is the take-home slide for me. Because you're making the right decisions, you're supporting your city, and then you look and compare how it impacts. Because it, it does matter. I still distinctly remember when I made a decision to first buy a house in the city of Chaska. You look at the real cost of ownership, right? You look at housing values and what house costs this city versus this city. But there's other values that go in there and I still distinctly remember and trying to figure out what was, what was so special about the city because taxes were different and, you know, other funds, other than your mortgage that get rolled into and stuff. You, you look at that, and so I still think that is a, you know, we got to keep that in mind too when we look at that, which I always liked that kind of be in your end slide because we want people to make that decision to build here, move here, live here. And that's one, you know, part of the budget that helps make that decision.
I also point out that I, I think that's something we can also say about our utilities. It is, you know, because, I mean, quite frankly, our utilities end up costing people more per year than our taxes do. Uh, you know, you're paying a hundred and some dollars a month to pay your electric bill. And, you know, so to be able to have our electric fees be nine to 10% lower than our neighboring cities makes a big difference too.
And, and you got to remember that 10% of that money generated helps offset our general fund. So.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else have a comment? All right. At this point, uh, Mike, do we have anyone on that wants to speak, uh, regarding, um, the truth and taxation?
No, it does not appear that we have any other guests or anyone raising their hand.
Okay, because I, I see two names. I see one that's probably Bolton Mink and then the other one name I don't know. So I just want to make sure. So, uh, one last time, I'm going to ask for any comments, uh, from anyone, uh, before I will go ahead and close and we're still good, uh, offline, right, Mike?
Yep, everything looks good.
Okay. All right. At this point, it's eight forty-eight. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Um, and at this point, I would, do we have to actually do a motion on this, Matt?
Yeah, you should, you should formally do an emotion to formally close the hearing and then establish the twenty-first as a date that we'll, we'll do this. Just real quick before we go to that though, I, I think what I'm hearing from you is go with option four and bring that back for the twenty-first.
Right. Uh, and, and I think as we talked about that, we went to the higher option just to see what the general feel was, uh, in, in, in the city. And I, I, I talked to Matt. Matt hasn't had anything. I don't know about anyone else. I, I have not really had anyone, uh, you know. Unfortunately, it's hard to see people like.
Well, I, I will say the comments that we had, maybe not necessarily budget related, but were more public safety related, is that people were, uh, very pleased to see us addressing public safety issues. Um, so I don't know, though, I mean, they were part of sort of the budget message that we had that went out there and they sort of got brought up because of that. They weren't necessarily focused on dollars and cents, but more of just their general support of the public safety emphasis. So that, that's probably the only real formal feedback we got.
And, and that was really the last of the four that we decided that we felt we should add. So if there was something to be taken out, it, in all likelihood would have been that. But I think, uh, I think as a council, we've been pretty strong saying that we're supporting, uh, all four options. But I think uh, I think as a council, we've been pretty strong saying that we're supporting uh all four options. Um, so, so I would say that, so I'll just say this. So what, what, what we're looking for is a, a motion to accept all four options.
No, you can do that tonight. No, you should only close the hearing and set the day. I just wanted to make sure that what we brought back was okay, but you shouldn't take a vote on the, on that.
Yep, yep, you're right. So, so all I, all, well, what are we voting on then?
You're voting on closing the public hearing?
I don't need to vote to close the public hearing.
And adopting uh December twenty first as a date we established your budget and levy.
All right. So, so that's what we're gonna do is that, uh, because I've already closed the public hearing. We don't vote on that one. So what, we're gonna, we're gonna, I would like a motion and a second to say that we will be approving our budget on December twenty first, twenty twenty, seven o'clock uh on a Zoom meeting here at uh. Wherever everyone's at. So um, well, is that adequate? Is that what we need a motion on?
Yep.
Okay. So if there's someone that's willing to uh make that motion.
A move by Hatfield.
All right. Motion by Hatfield.
Second by Hubbard.
Second by Hubbard to uh have December twenty first, twenty twenty, uh, seven o'clock, uh, Chaska City Council meeting to uh approve the twenty twenty one Chaska City Budget uh Discussion. Hearing done, uh, we'll do uh roll. So Councilmember Hatfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Gra?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Mayor Winchell, I passes uh four oh again, Councilmember Wong is not with us tonight. So. All right. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it. Uh, thanks Noel and Brian for, and Chief Ryan for uh being here with us tonight. I think you're done. I think you're done for the night. So, all right. Well, Noel's probably not. We got one more for Noel. So.
I hope he'll leave yet.
Yeah, we'll move to seven B, adopt resolution twenty twenty dash ninety four and twenty twenty dash ninety five issued on sales of bonds. Series twenty twenty F and twenty twenty one A.
Mayor Councilmember, I am gonna turn this over to Noel. This is regards to both the refunding and sale of, of debt and setting a parameters resolution. So Noel, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Matt, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Um, previously, the city approved a bond sale that was gonna come back tonight on December seventh. Um, in discussions with Baker Tilly, who was our municipal advisor. It was advised that we delay that sale. We have rescheduled it for this Wednesday. This was done for primarily two reasons. One was to um allow the um, the rating that was going to be issued by Standard and Poor's, which was released last Friday, to be available on the street for underwriters to review the credit for a longer period of time. And secondly, it allows us to position the sale when there is less demand, or you should say less product in the market, which should help us in our positioning for obtaining bids on that Wednesday. There were some other issues scheduled to be sold today. So by delaying the sale, we are able to capture a better market and um take advantage of the rating that S and P has released. The reason we wanted to wait for the S and P rating is that the series twenty twenty F is an electric revenue refunding bond. In the past, we have had Moody's rate our electric debt. We're in the process of shifting that rating from Moody's over to S and P. This has to do with some um adjustments we're trying to do. Because Moody's will issue an underlying Geo rating, even though they do not rate our Geo debt. And we have found that their rating on our Geo debt is two notches below what S and P has on our Geo debt. So that creates a disparity in the market. And so one of the ways of having them remove their Geo underlying rating will be to have S and P rate all of our debt. Um, so we have three outstanding series of electric revenue debt. This refunding allows us to shift one of those series over to S and P, leaving the remaining two, which over approximately the next seven to ten years will probably either be refunded or will most likely be refunded, which will allow us to eliminate the Moody's rating altogether. So this refunding allowed us to start a strategic move away from Moody's to S and P for our electric revenue rating. Um, the, the original sale was set for tonight. What we're asking council to do is to consider two parameter resolutions. A parameters resolution establishes maximums and minimums that allow city staff to go forward with um Baker Tilly to issue the debt in the market. And then once the uh, the bids have been received, we can um have the mayor and Matt as city administrator sign off as the pricing committee to accept the sale of that debt. We will then return to council with a resolution that will confirm the results of that sale at a later meeting. Um, the council would need to pass that resolution at the later meeting to affirm the terms of the sale. So if there is any objection to selling the debt, it would have to be raised tonight because the um confirmation resolution must be passed at a later date. So the electric revenue bond that we were trying to originally proposing to sell tonight, um refunds are twenty, excuse me. Refunds, the twenty eleven D electric revenue bonds. We've identified this generates about a hundred and eighty six thousand dollars in present value savings. That's a savings of seven point six percent on the refunded debt. So there is an opportunity here for the city to reduce our future debt service costs in our electric fund. The second series that we're issuing tonight is the series twenty twenty one A. This is a general obligation state aid bond. This bond will be used to finance the city's portion of the interchange project that was constructed at Highway two twelve and County Road forty four. Um, originally in twenty nineteen, the city issued twenty million dollars in a line of credit for the, for the purpose of, excuse me. Sorry about that. We originally sold twenty million dollars as a line of credit in twenty nineteen to finance the interchange project. This allowed us to provide financing for both the county portion and the state portion of the project. That line of credit will come due uh at the end of February in twenty twenty one. So this bond issue will finance the city share of the project with permanent financing over a twenty year period. The estimated par on this is about five million one hundred ninety five thousand. And we anticipate there'll be approximately five million two hundred and six thousand dollars of project costs. One of the things that you'll see in the structure of this bond is we have built in a reoffering premium. This will allow the uh underwriters to bid higher interest rates on the short term maturities. This will make the mark, the bonds more um acceptable in the market to buyers. And as a result, we'll be able to use those reoffering premiums to structure the bond. That does not increase our cost. It actually helps reduce our costs by making the bonds more more acceptable in the market with the higher interest rates, but we pay a lower net interest rate because of that. So, excuse me. The second series twenty twenty one A is supported by our Geo revenues. So there will be a taxing pledge and this has been anticipated in the Southwest uh Chaska study that we have put together for development fees to support this debt. The electric revenue refunding bond does not carry a Geo pledge. It's supported solely by the electric revenues. So before the council tonight will be, excuse me, approval of two resolutions, both of our parameters resolutions. On the electric utility bond, we will have a maximum par of two million five hundred thousand. We anticipate we'll have present value savings of about seven percent. So we've set a, a minimum net present value savings of three percent in the resolution. And the sales date for that has been rescheduled for this Wednesday on December ninth. On the twenty twenty one A series, the Geo state aid bonds, we've set a maximum parameter of five million five hundred thousand for the par amount. And we have set a maximum true interest cost of three point five percent. We anticipate that the market will be very favorable and significantly below that interest rate. So at this time, we'll be, I'll be asking council to consider and approve the two resolutions. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
So Noel, didn't we have, don't we, or maybe it's different ones. We, we don't set a parameter unless there's something different like this where it's really not on a council night and we need to move, make that decision. Is that kind of what that's about?
Yes, that is correct. The parameters resolution allows um, council sets those parameters, which then allows staff with our advisor Baker Tilly to determine what would be the best date for issuance. We did this on some of the bond series we issued earlier this year and we've done it in prior years. Oftentimes, it's been done with the underwriter in mind as they try to determine what would be the most favorable market for us to be issuing. Um, because of the uh current market at the end of the year, there's um a lot of changes because some people are waiting until after the first of the year to invest in bonds. So by using the parameters resolutions, we feel we can still capture the current low interest rates. Um, get both um series of bonds sold this year. We will prob, we will close on the electric revenue this year, but wait and close on the um, the uh state aid, Geo state aid bonds next year. Because we won't need those proceeds to pay off the letter of credit until February. So it allows us to ensure we capture the current market and take advantage of those low interest rates we have today.
Well, is there any chance that that, you know, if we're not gonna use that five point five million until February? Is there a chance that will be a better market then? Or, I mean, I know that it's always a gamble, but just curious.
Pretty good right now.
The interest rates, the interest rates are very good right now. There's still, um, there is actually more demand for people who are trying to invest their capital to buy bonds and there is supply right now. After the first of the year, there's gonna be a lot of people with the new budget year issuing a lot of bonds. So there'll be a lot more competition. So I think it would be, we'd probably pay a higher interest rate just from a supply and demand perspective. So with low interest rates and low supply, it's a good time to be in the market now.
Okay, good. Oh, that's a good, thanks for sharing that. Um. Yeah, any other council members have questions before we figure out here what we gotta vote exactly on? Before, before Noel tells us what that, what, how we're gonna state that, what we gotta vote on?
I just had a quick question in regards to what you had said in the very, very beginning in regards to um Moody's versus the S and P. So are you saying that Moody's used to rate the electric utility, but we're, but now it will be the S and P global ratings that will do it?
Yes, in the pa, in the past, we have had our electric revenue debt rated by Moody's and our Geo debt rated by S and P.
Okay.
And this goes back to some issues we had when we were issuing our series two thousand bonds for the gas turbine. And there was just, at that time, Moody's was in a better position to understand the market that we were trying to issue that debt in. Um, and that has worked well. It's been a good relationship until about four years ago when Moody's came to us and said, because we rate your electric debt, we're not gonna publish an underlying Geo debt. Even though we don't rate your Geo debt, we're gonna say what we would put on that. And that rating that they issued was two notches lower than what our, our S and P rating was with Geo.
That creates confusion in the market as far as if you have a good rating with one and you have a double, you have two notches down with the other. It sort of puts questions in people's mind like, why is that? Well, they, part of it is because they have different criteria that they look at. Um, you know, so they come up with, with different uh results. But as much confusion as we can take out of that equation, the better.
So then are we moving just to, to do S and P global then from here on out? Is that kind of my understanding then?
That is, that is the objective because S and P has been issuing our Geo debt. We have three issues that were rated with Moody's. And because we could do this refunding, this was the opportunity to move one of those three from Moody's to S and P. And then the other two, when they are available to be refunded, we would probably, we will also move those to S and P. So at the end of all three being refunded, Moody's will no longer be rating our electric debt. And therefore, they'll no longer publish an underlying Geo rating. So everything at that point will be with S and P.
Okay, thanks.
All right, what else?
No?
Yes, Luke.
Um, just in case, I'm sure it won't happen, but just in case somebody would like to vote against one and not again, wrote differently that she's probably have two resolutions.
Yes, there are two resolutions attached and we also requesting that each be, each resolution be acted on as a separate motion for the reasons you're highlighting, Luke.
Okay. Thanks for sharing, Luke, making sure we're, I thought I did remember hearing that we needed to resolve, or two votes on these. I think it's in the staff report that it talked about that. So. All right. So, so, so Noel, how do I, do I just need to, how, how do I need to say this?
At the end of the staff report, if you've got that, are the two motions, um, if you could just read each one, um.
Hang on here. I do have it on another computer here. So I don't have to.
And they're both, they're both short.
So twenty twenty ninety five, twenty twenty ninety four. Okay. Let me see if I can get it to come up here. That's not what I want. Sorry.
Mayor, I have them if you.
Well, I think, I think what I gotta do is go to the very first one. That does it. Hang on. Action needed. We need to, so we need to make a motion to, to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash ninety four, authorizing issuance and establishing pricing committee to award the sale of electric utility revenue funding bond series twenty twenty F. Is that what I need to say?
Correct.
Okay. So is there someone willing to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash ninety four? Whatever I just said.
So move by Hubbard.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second by.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield. Discussion. Again, this is on motion uh twenty twenty dash ninety four, which is uh the electric utility revenue refunding bond series twenty twenty F. Uh, just hearing none, hearing none. Uh, Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gra?
Yes.
Councilmember Hatfield?
Yes.
Mayor Winchell, yes, passes four oh minus Councilmember Wong. And our next one would be uh motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash ninety five, authorizing issuance and establishing pricing committee to award sale of a general obligation state aid street bonds, series twenty twenty one A.
So move by Councilmember Gra?
Motion by Councilmember Gra.
Second by Hatfield.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield. Discussion. Hearing none. Councilmember Gra?
Yes.
Councilmember Hatfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Mayor Winchell, yep. Passes four oh again, minus uh Councilmember Wong. All right. I think we have that uh done. Uh Noel, is, is that something you're gonna need signatures right away on Wednesday from us?
Yes. On this Wednesday, when the sale goes through, I'll need yourself and Matt to both sign.
It's uh depending on the time of day, Wednesday's a really rough day. So we'll have to see if we can work that in. Um, so I am really tied up from about noon, ten o'clock on. So, but I'll be at, I'll be at the ELC meeting and we can do it, or well, I'll be home at the ELC meeting. But uh then I, then I have to be.
Really the best time to do it if possible.
What's that?
That's probably the best time to do it if possible because we're both in that.
Yeah, because uh then afternoon, I gotta be at the community center and then I have a four o'clock Zoom to probably six and so it's kind of crazy. So. Okay.
We'll, we'll work with you to accommodate what you need to make sure.
All right. I just, I just wanted to warn you that I, it's Wednesday's just kind of a challenging day. Important day Wednesday, but challenging. All right. Uh, we'll move on to item seven C then, adopt resolution twenty twenty dash ninety six, approving professional engineering services agreement for the uh Trump Highway forty one and County State Aid um forty four improvements. I don't know.
Yeah, I'll be doing that one. Uh, so Mayor Councilmember, this is sort of exciting one. The uh, so we've been talking for a long time about the improvements on Highway forty one in downtown and, and on Highway sixty one. And over the fat, last five years, we've been wor, working to solicit funds in conjunction with uh Mendat and Carver County. And finally, this year, we did cross the threshold and were able to put together all of the funds to, to be able to fund the twenty four and a half billion dollar project, which is scheduled to start in twenty twenty two and will finish up in twenty twenty three. And when it's completed, will have pretty significant uh impact on downtown, a lot of which uh you guys have already uh seen. Uh, as part of that process, uh, there's. As part of that process, there's a couple of things we need to do to get rolling as, you know, even though it's twenty twenty-two. We have a lot of work to do to get all the engineering documents together and, and go through a process. There's a lot of businesses that get impacted. Through the construction, so we need to engage in a public process to make sure. We understand how to keep businesses access during that time and, and how we stage it and construct it. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And so we're at a point where we really need to enter into a professional service agreement. With an engineering firm to be able to. Move forward with getting the work, plenary work on this project done and bringing us up to construction. To that end, because there are state dollars are, are part of this project, we are required to go through an RFP process to. To be able to solicit professional services. We did. We did go through the process of soliciting multiple, multiple firms. To receive proposals for these professional services. Even though we solicited multiple firms, we only received one proposal back from Bolton and Mink. Who is also the engineering firm that, that was the one that led the original corridor study. And so have quite a bit of knowledge on the project. Quite honestly, because of all the work that they've done. On the project, I don't think it was necessarily surprised to other firms that, that they would be the ones that would. Submit for it because there is so much work that they've already completed. And some of the areas that, that they need to really get expertise. In different things that we've done prior to this highway forty-one study, so like our downtown master plan, working with Hoyzington Cogler. To incorporate the streetscape into this, we're working with Stan Tech to be able to get some of the existing engineering into this. They'll be able to bring those groups on as part of their, and be able to, to complete that work. So. So tonight we are considering. Entering into a professional service agreement with Bolton and Mink. You can see their proposal is two, about two point six million dollars. For the full engineering for design of the, of the project. This is something that is part of a cost share agreement or that we would have with Carver County. Which we're still working on getting the, the final draft of that agreement together. But Bolton and Mink, because they need to get moving on this sooner and later, we wanted to give them the indication that we're going to be accepting their proposal. Formally so that they can get to work even before we get that agreement formally in place. So we do have Eric Johnson here from Bolton and Mink, and I got to say if there's one person. That is completely responsible for getting us all the funding. That, that we needed for this project, it is that guy. And he has worked some miracles in this project. And unfortunately, as part of the process, we drove him out of Chaska because he used to be a Chaska resident and he just said, I'm fed up, I'm out of here. So. He, he just, he just moved just outside of town. They got a new house, but Eric has, has been just a rock star in this project and. You know. You, you can see in the staff report, our share of the twenty-two or twenty-four and a half million dollar project is about two million dollars. Which is in the grand scheme of things, a very low cost for us to pay to have a pretty significant improvement in downtown. So between Eric and I see Matt Clark jumped on now too. Really have done some great work with pulling this together and we really have a lot of confidence in Bolton and Mink being able to. Pull the design together and be able to engage with our businesses in downtown to be able to make it a successful project. So with that being said, staff is recommending that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty dash ninety-six. To approve the professional service agreement. With Bolton and Mink, and like I said, same time, we're going to be working to get the profession or the cost share agreement together with Carver County. Which we should have early in January to be able to bring back and that'll be sort of the final piece, but this. Action tonight will give Bolton and Mink the ability to be able to confidently move forward with starting to get work started on this. I can tell you that Eric's sweating because he knows how much work has to be done and he just wants to get started, so. He, that's why he's anxiously waited for two hours and fifteen minutes while we talked about other things. So I can certainly answer any questions you might have, but staff is recommending approval of this professional service agreement.
So did we have other bids, Matt? I, it doesn't.
We did not.
Just because they know the. The kind of in-depth behind the scene.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's. You know, professional services typically for things that we would do. We would not go through a bid process like that because they're professional services. You typically go with the person who has the most information and. And all that, it was just a requirement that, that existed for the funding that we had. It does not surprise me in the least that we only got one proposal because they were the ones that did all the work to, to, to do the corridor study.
Well, basically they got, they got all the history of the project.
Yes.
Well, I just got, I just got to make sure Eric is being honest with us.
Well, Eric's fine, I'm concerned about Matt, but.
Well, that we can handle.
Yeah.
Both of them we can handle.
Yeah.
Um, council questions?
Think you, I mean, I highlighted, I guess the only thing I just want to confirm and state the question and more for on record and to state the question is. You know, the only, obviously the concern when you only have one bid is you only, you got nothing to compare it to, but I, I'm, you know, we've looked at it, we think it's fair, consistent to what we would expect it to have been. I just want to make sure and confirm that nods and everything like that, just because obviously the disadvantage of having one bid is it, you, you got nothing to compare it to and. And you know, you're, you're just taking kind of what it is.
Well, first of all, it does, it'd be, it's consistent with what we would expect for the cost of it, but the second thing is. The other reason that, that you wouldn't see anybody else bid on this is because. The amount. The amount of money it would take them to get up to where Bolton and Mink is now. Would make their, their proposal much more expensive. And so nobody really wants to put out a proposal that's going to be significantly more. It, in some respects, it's sort of a silly requirement to have a bidding requirement for professional services because of that. But we do need to, to follow that process for, for the funding that we're using.
I'd say the same thing to. Council member Gra is that, you know, in comparable comparison to what it is that we have already in place with our city consultant. You know, the, if you look at the overall percentage cost of what the project is versus what. The consultant proposal is generally what we see is around that ten, ten percent mark. So I mean, using that as a comparable to say, are they in the ballpark? That's really, when we went through the numbers. You know, it's a very unique project, you know, when you think about it, grand scheme of things, there's a lot of components to this. So there's, there, with that comes a little bit. The cost increase, but generally speaking, the numbers we felt very confident.
Is, and, and this is really open to anybody and everybody. Yeah, and reading the staff report, it talked about how we really got to get going. We got a lot of work to do in a short period of time. Is this fairly normal or is this happening because we got all the funding maybe quicker than we anticipated?
Well, we, we got the funding a lot quicker than I thought we would. So you know, you know, a lot of times you see yourself go through processes a couple of times before you get those, those funds. And a lot of these, we got it right away, so. The timeline that we are, are on to me is at least a couple of years faster than what I thought it was going to be.
Okay, well, I, I said, I just, it kind of goes back to John. It's always hard when, when you're, when you're putting out two point eight. For, for services and, and just add the one bit. I, I just want to be very clear on that, that we've done our homework and. And I think they're valid questions that John asked and Eric, absolutely nothing against you or your firm, but. It's just, you know, in, in the day of transparency, we just want to be very clear that, that we're making the right decisions and. You know, it's just as sitting here. It's, it, we just want to make sure that that's the right process that we want to, so that's. I, I, I totally get all the questions regarding it because I kind of had the same questions in my, in my mind as well, so. But I, again, knowing that you're dealing with a city, a county, a state. And there's going to be, am I seeing that right now? Is this where? Alongside of, between chasers and the bank, that'll now go into that parking lot? Is that where that, is that the way I see that in that, in that preliminary layout that we have? Is that the plan?
Yeah, the plan would be that there, the county has, you're talking more along sixty-one is would there be, would there be a meet, yeah, would there be a median? That's what was approved in the, the study is that basically they would have a, a median from along sixty-one from basically. You know, the forty-one intersection all the way back to Yellow Brick.
I think what the mayor's referring to is that interior alleyway. That, that was talked, that would be implemented as part of this too.
We have that in the funding, in the funding plan. It's really a question is, you know, with the county and with, with us is, you know. Does that get implemented now? Does that go forward? But yes, right now it's all in the project.
Okay, and is that, is that parcel? Is that that parcel that we own there or do we have to purchase that? That little piece behind chasers and between chasers and Coopers?
There'd be some right away.
Some and they own some.
Yeah, we own some, they own some.
That owned by, is that owned by the Brickyard or Coopers?
That's owned by the Brickyard.
Brickyard.
Okay, okay. All right. Okay. Uh, questions, anyone else from council?
Yeah, I had a question. Um, so it sounds like the timeline is for it to start in the next summer, right? Twenty twenty-one and then wrap up.
Construction will start in twenty twenty-two, the design will be through twenty.
Oh, whoops, yeah, that's what I meant, I'm sorry. So, so that the, the twenty twenty-two and then wrap up in twenty twenty-three. I'm assuming that it's like going to be in phases because you talked about multiple businesses being impacted by it and everything along those lines, so.
Yeah, that, you know, and it also ties into our downtown street program for next year, so we're trying to get that section of. Walnut Street done by Red Bench and Dolce Vita, so we can get some sewer work done. And then you'll see sixty-one done at one point and forty-one done at one point, so we can keep accesses at least open. At some point from one of those directions.
Well, this basically affects every downtown business.
Yeah.
There isn't anybody that won't be affected.
The other thing that we look at implementing first is the off-street parking. Which is included as part of this, so that before the project even starts at that, that the parking would be. Completed, so that there's, so before the parking's lost on forty-one. That that off-street parking would be added to be able to park there.
Okay, so council member Hatfield, I would say that you really want to stay updated on this, being that downtown. Representative, because you'll probably be getting phone calls.
Yeah, I was just gonna add, oh, sorry.
They, they ask about this all the time, so and, and Nate has certainly done a great job at helping keep them informed as well, but definitely. Will, we have a meeting on Friday, so. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that this whole, I mean, the project is, is unique in itself. But the part that we can do as a city is just making sure that our communications with the businesses are really strong and. And they get it. I mean, they all know that it's going to affect their business one way or another and. Unfortunately, they've been hit so hard with flooding and the one sixty-nine closure for a while and now COVID. And it just seems like it, it just doesn't quit for those folks, so. The best that we, you know, we got to stay, clearly keep them informed and keep them in the loop, make sure they have a contact from the city and. We got to keep. Jen, Jen up to date as well, so she can, she can do all that, so. Just this, this project, as much as any project, is going to be really communication driven and we got to really stay on top of that one, so. Just appreciate, I, I want to make sure that we have that out there and be very clear that. This one is going to be communication driven more than, more than the construction itself.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to make sure that as well, that we were just being really. Overly proactive as far as reaching out to all those individual businesses, not just. We put it on our agenda and if you don't sign up for the notifications, too bad, so sad sort of thing because that is so impactful. So I just really want to make sure that we're, you know, even overdoing the whole, like communicating the timelines and, and when this.
You know, and we, when we did, when we did the second streets. You, you know, those businesses were so concerned ahead of time, but that project went so fast and smooth. And the communications were, were excellent there because, I mean, most people were kind of amped up at the beginning. But were very excited and had nothing but compliments about how fast the project was done. And that, a lot of that's just based on communication. I mean, we went to them and said, how do we want to do it? Do we want to do the east side first, then the west side? West side or the east side? And they said, no, do it all, tear the Band-Aid off, let's go. And I, I, I think, I, I have that feeling that we'll be doing the same approach. Is, you know, if there's something like that that we have to do that we can deal with that, and like I said. We've been so good about, about giving the residents the opportunity to speak through the whole downtown street. Re, reconstruction that, you know, people come to expect it, but that doesn't mean we got a lot of regard down. We got to stay up on. Stay positive on that and, and, and this one, like I say, this one is going to affect everyone. But again, I, I think they see the positive outcomes of the other projects. And you know, they're going to see a positive outcome of this project as well, so. It's, it's a, it's going to be a big project, you know, when you take, you know, forty-one from the River Bridge all the way to Walnut Court. And, and then, and then go to the east on sixty-one, thi- this is huge and this is huge for downtown. So this will be exciting, but I, 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 I fear the comments will hear during the process. It just. It's because it just happens, you know, so.
I think, like I said, they ask about it a lot, the downtown, and at their meetings, the board asks about a lot, I think. If anything, they'll be really glad to hear that it's kind of moving forward, has been sort of this looming thing that's going to happen with Nada. You know, it's happening, we're getting the funding, so I think. They'll be. Excited, but obviously just because it kind of gives some. End in sight almost for the project. Like I said, it's been kind of like this looming thing for them. And now it kind of has some more structure, so I think they'll, they'll be receptive to that news, but I absolutely agree, communication will be really important.
Well, and, and the one thing I would tell them is that people that have alley access. I would have them really start working on making the adjustments that they need that they can use alley access because. They would be able to have those accesses. I, there's no reason they shouldn't, I think, right, Matt Clark? Yeah, so they should have their alley accesses, so anybody that has that, they want to make sure that they have that ability to have that. Because there'll be times where certainly the, your main street access is not going to be accessible or not very well, so. All right, awesome. Anyone else have any comments? I've been kind of yapping too much here, I better quit. If not, I've entertained a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash ninety-six.
So moved by Hatfield?
Motion by council member Hatfield.
Taken by council member Gra.
What are you grinning for? Were you waiting for me to?
Just waiting.
I, I was just gonna drop the hammer. I was just gonna drop the hammer and, and second that one, but you beat me to it. All right, so we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty ninety-six, again approving professional engineering services. Agreement for Trump Highway forty-one and County State Eight forty-four improvement, not, not County Road forty-four improvements, that wouldn't be right. This should be. Forty-one and sixty-one, right?
Yes.
Because the staff report says forty-four, I just realized that now when I'm saying that. One and sixty-one improvements, not forty-four.
High fault typo, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I don't know, it's the agenda. I'm not sure with the staff report, let's see if this.
The staff report's right.
Okay. Okay, yeah, and, and agenda says sixty-one, so, all right, I think we got that corrected. Everyone council, you're all good with that, it's forty-one and sixty-one? All right, okay, good. All right, motion and a second, any comments? Hearing none, uh, council member Hatfield. Hearing none. Uh, Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes.
Councilmember Gra.
Hi.
And Mayor Wind Shuttle is yes, passes four oh minus Mike. All right, awesome. Thanks, Eric, for for hanging with us and uh we're looking forward to another great project, so. Awesome, thanks.
Thanks.
All right, that's it on action items. We moved to number eight uh bills. Has anyone got a question on? Bills, I think we got a little shorter one. Seems we had back to back meeting.
Uh, Councilmember Wong has a three questions.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll go through them. Um, the first one is uh page six. And it's Highland Management Group and it talks about broken window repair at Hazelteen. Um, is the question was what happened? How do we break the windows? This was actually from par thirty. Um, the golf balls going into uh uh into their townhouses. This was sort of uh the last part of the deal to get that parcel for free. Um, I I told them that we I told them that we'd pay the two broken window fees if they'd give us the parcel for free. So um, so we agreed to do that.
And now let the mayor and now let the mayor golf there anymore, so he doesn't anymore. Yeah, there there is a point to that.
We definitely got the better end of the deal on that, um, but that's what it is.
Beats a big glass fourteen uh seven hundred bucks a piece.
Yeah, there it was two two windows and two units. Uh, second one was on page fifteen, question on Ryan contracting. It says DT reconstruction. Uh, this is one of our uh payments for the downtown reconstruction on Stoughton Avenue uh for this summer. And the third one was page seventeen, uh Truciel America Repair to Curb in Neighborhood. Uh, this is actually stormwater uh work that we've done, and I forget the neighborhood that was in, but basically doing some curb work. Uh, to be able to address some drainage issues that we've had uh in a neighborhood. So we we do that periodically through our stormwater fund. Uh, to deal with with problem spots and neighborhoods that might have cooled water or things like that that. End up freezing in the winter and causing slick spots on roads. Okay, that's it.
Um, I assuming all the refunds are for programming for the month of December and stuff. There are a lot of sixteen dollar refunds. I assume that's what that's all about.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, it's tough. I I if we if we took all the re- refunds out of there, we wouldn't really have much, would we?
No.
Yeah, so, all right. Anyone else comment on or question on a bill? Okay, I entertain a motion to pay the bills. I'll make the vote. I'll make the vote. I'm making the motion. I'm making the motion. That's it.
Wrong button.
You're, I saw I saw nothing but movement, so Wind Shuttle is making the motion to pay the bills. So Hubbard, you didn't get nothing on that one. You're too slow. All right, so we have a motion and second to pay the bills for their discussion. Hearing none, uh, Councilmember Hubbard.
Hi.
Got unmuted? Good, pay to go.
Pressing the right button now.
Councilmember Gra.
Yes.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
And Mayor Wind Shuttle, yes, passes four oh minus uh Councilmember Wong. Now I'm adding Councilmember Wong because I know this gets redone, so that doesn't show that there was a descending boat anywhere, so. All right, uh, and we move into other businesses. Let's start with uh Councilmember Gra. He's on the top of my screen.
Uh, since the back to back means I really don't have much, I just appreciate uh.
Thank you for it, thanks.
Yep, your sentiments beginning about uh um today's significant day with our veterans. I appreciated that and. Um, I uh I just want to thank the city for the um truth in taxation means. I think, you know, this year was unique, but I hope and continue to. Uh, we do those in the future, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Hubbard. That's you.
I, okay, yeah, back to back meetings, not much to say. The only thing I wanted to highlight this week was we have some great programming that our. Community Center and Park and Recs Department is doing just in the midst of everything, I feel. Um, like they are really pivoting and doing a phenomenal job of thinking of creative ways of engaging our community. And um, just two of them that kind of come to mind. One was uh they're doing this trim the tree. It's this hashtag Chaska cheer. So starting tomorrow, and I don't know how long it goes till you can pick up an ornament. In the front entry, like it's in a bay and it's one per family and then decorate it and then. Put it on one of the trees down at or it sounds like they have allocated trees down at the Fireman's Park, if I'm correct. Um.
Evan, we're I haven't even heard of that one.
Oh, I I saw it come out and I thought, wow, that's such a great idea. You know, it's a twofold thing. It gets people to do family things together during this time. And it also gets people out in our community. I think it it's gonna bring people downtown to shop. Um, and then that kind of goes into the second thing that they had promoted was the stroller on the park. Um, what a better way than, you know, hanging, uh, you know, custom made ornament on a tree down there. I just think that's a great idea, and so I just want to give a shout out to them because that's just, that's great. It's creative thinking and uh really neat.
Yeah, they had one where they did some uh take home programming too that um. I know we signed up for that. They put together a bag of programming that you basically took home and did with your kids, so. Um, I agree. I think that they're doing a good job of trying to figure out ways to keep people connected.
Absolutely, so. And then I'm also looking forward. I'm volunteering for that Hero and Helpers um this upcoming weekend, so looking forward to that. Uh, it was one of the best things I did last year, so I know it will look different with with COVID, but um. This it was so great, so I'm looking forward to it again, and that's all I've got.
I'll be helping you there as well, but in a different capacity.
The good news is on that is that uh um the Rotary last week was able to raise sort of the remaining amount of funds. So that everybody's gonna be able to be helped, so. Um, so thanks to all the Rotarians have really stepped up during this during this process.
That's awesome. Uh, thanks, uh, Councilmember Hubbard, Councilmember Hatfield.
Yeah, I have a few things. Um, uh, Councilmember Hubbard kind of mentioned it, but the tree stroll. And uh in Fireman's Park going on through the end of the month. Um, if you take pictures, make sure to hashtag Chaska Tree, uh, and uh there's also the food shelf donation. With that, um, so that's a nice way to get out of the house socially distanced outside and do that tree stroll. Um, and then you could go take some pictures in City Square Park with the little photo ops there, so. Lots to do. It's been kind of nice weather, um. For Minnesota, so um those are good things to do. Uh, and then another thing I just wanted to note, just um kind of was nice. To see as things um kind of ebb and flow with COVID. Uh, the governor did announce today that um there's been some new CDC recommendations for shorter quarantines announced. Um, just based on like symptoms and so um it's posted on the Minnesota State Health and then. Um, his page so a few places, but uh the Minnesota State Health website is always the best, but basically um. Everyone was quarantining for fourteen days, still safest to wait that long to see if you contract the virus, but certain. Conditions allow you to quarantine seven to ten. Um, if you've tested positive, if you haven't tested positive, no symptoms. Continue to monitor for fourteen days. Um, if you also test negative after five days, you can shorten your quarantine to seven days, so go read that. Um, because it's it's some good updated information. Obviously, we're still uh we're still under the. Stay at home order, um whatever it's called, but uh kind of nice to see that we're learning more and more about the virus and are able to make some of those changes. Um, and and whatnot, especially for mental health and things like that, so that was uh nice to see today. Um, and then uh just a little plug um that I wanted to share personally for my Facebook page that's public. Um, I've been doing recaps of our meetings there, so if um if you don't get to watch our meetings and you want to just check out a quick recap. I've been posting those as a new thing um with a link to our packet and the recording as well, and those are. Those are my personal comments and thoughts on the meeting, um but that's that's there if somebody wanted to see a quick recap. Um, and then the only other thing is I have a question for staff uh commission. Um, applications and that process is that I just haven't seen much about it. Is that's obviously open. Um, is there an update on that at all?
Nate?
Uh, yeah, they're they're open. Um, I know we've been receiving applications, so I've I've received updates from Denise a few times as she has received them. Um, our intent is to line up interviews for the first two meetings in January. Um, so that would be January fourth and January twenty fifth meeting. Um, that council would be able to. Uh, I guess, you know, do conduct the interviews uh for the candidates that have applied, so. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, yeah, I just hadn't seen much about it, so.
I'll also put that plug out there too, that's sometimes the best candidates won't apply unless they're asked. Um, so you know, for anybody out there that knows of somebody that would really, they think be good at any of our commissions. You know, make the ask uh of them because, you know, like I said, a lot a lot of people just don't even think of themselves in that position unless. Somebody suggests it to them.
Mm-hmm.
Nate, what's the deadline on that?
Well, we've been asking for December fifteenth, um just to give us enough time to. Um, you know, be able to line up the interviews and things, but. You know, if people send in their application after that, we'll still entertain it um and try to get them in into the council for their interview, so.
I think that's a really good question. I guess the one thing I would maybe, I know, uh, we got some good technology people in the organization. I assume those interviews will be through Zoom, similar to this format. Um, I just think be mindful of that our app, that Zoom process isn't a. Forbearance for someone applying, right? So maybe they don't have the technology or the ability to. To have a device that has, you know, a Zoom or webcam capability. Yeah, they can still call in. So I don't know if there's a way of like, I I don't make an option, but I'm thinking like, could you, you know, host them to come in? And they'd be the only one in uh the chamber to to the Zoom, uh, you know. Again, the phone works, but for someone who does phone interviews for a living. Seeing and interacting with a person as close as you possibly can versus in COVID does help, but I just don't want that to be a reason why someone wouldn't apply. Because they're unfamiliar with the technology or don't have the ability to use the technology.
I think one thing that's gonna be in our advantage in January, and it's always happens this way, is that our meetings are on the first and the last Mondays. Of the month, uh, because of Martin Luther King Day being in there. I pretty strongly believe that by that last meeting and in January. I think we're gonna be back in position where we can at least start having distance meetings um back in the event center. Um, so if we, you know, that's not a guarantee, but I just sort of feel that. That uh, you know, given where we'll we'll be far enough away from the holiday holidays sort of quarantine period that. At least in my mind, I've always been sort of targeting around that time to get us back in person that. Maybe what we end up doing is is that we, if we have people who uh just don't feel comfortable with the Zoom, maybe we just. Purposely wait uh with them until that second interview process. And then if it if we're still not back in person, then we could look at some option like that.
Yeah.
Uh, a couple of things spinning out of this. Do we have uh? Do we know how many people are leaving the commissions that we know where the biggest gaps are? I mean. This is there three or four people leaving planning because of their timed out or somebody moved or? Do we know what we're looking for at this point?
Yeah, we we have that information. I don't have it in front of me right now, so I don't want to misstate numbers. I can say from the Human Rights Commission because I staffed that one. Um, five of the people who are on that commission are up for reappointment and we have two. Uh, open alternate positions that are currently open. Um, and so, you know, I I don't know, you know, the people that need to. You know, that are up for reappointment, what their decisions are as far as whether they're intending to submit an application or not. Um, but there could be some significant need there depending on how, you know, those those folks go. Um, but for the other commissions, I would need to take a look at that form mark that we that we use to track that stuff. Um, to be accurate with the response there.
You could have Denise actually email that out though to council members, just so you guys have that ahead of time.
That maybe because you might have somebody that's you're thinking for planning and there's no opening in planning and.
Right.
Not to say that we can't change, but generally if someone on a commission's been doing a good job, that's. We not. And the other thing that I was gonna say that, I don't know if this is gonna interfere or not. Uh, we have to do swearing in of three people. How are we gonna do that and are we gonna do it at? In the council meeting, wait, open the council meeting, do the swearing in, and how are we gonna do that via Zoom? Yeah, I know we can do it.
Asking me something I haven't even thought about yet.
Well, that's why I'm throwing it out because I didn't I didn't think about it till Nate said, yeah, we're gonna do it the first meeting in January and I went. Whoa, we, you know, we got three people to swear in and, you know.
I I think we're able to do it over Zoom if we need to. Uh, but we can do some looking into. I think once we go to a Zoom format because of a declared emergency, I think we can do. All of our action via Zoom.
Yeah, and I just didn't know if we were gonna do that prior to the meeting.
Yeah, typically what we do is we would open up the meeting and before we do anything else, we'd.
Because that would have, I was just making sure that that didn't affect the interviews, because a lot of times. Our interview times are barely enough now, and then all of a sudden we go, oh, yeah, we forgot we gotta do.
Yeah, we wouldn't do the swearing in until after opening at seven.
Okay, so then that won't affect our. But again, I will say that when we do interviews, we gotta allow somewhere a gap that we can not get so far behind, because. It it just sometimes you can't get people, then some people don't talk at all and you. Yeah, it's hard to get them to say much, but I know there's a lot of times it's hard to get the questions in. Uh, and and without shutting somebody down in the in the middle, so if there's a. Even if there's a five minute, allowing somewhere to make up that we just allow that in there, but um. We'll figure that out as we move forward, but just something uh from past, from the all the past interviews, that's been the biggest thing is the time factor, so. All right.
And on that similar topic really quick, uh, the Human Rights Award um nominations are due December eleventh, so that's in a few days. Um, so just a reminder, if you have a nomination, individual org- organization that's helped the community. To make sure to nominate them on the website.
Great. Thanks for bringing both those up. I forgot about the commissions. That's a that's a great one that remind that and just. Bring it up again and remind us all uh to start talking about that and thinking about that and. I know I know I follow one gentleman that's interested in heritage preservation. I I sent him a special message and say that. No nominations are open, so I know he's dealing with something. He's got some family issues similar to Mike, so I I don't know. Where, you know, he's gotta take care of his family first. Hopefully he'll see if he has time to do this and. He was a former architect and now in a construction, so he would be a perfect spot in that. In that uh heritage preservation, so hopefully hopefully we'll see his name, but we'll see what happens, so. All right, uh, Councilmember Hatfield, it was not everything. I didn't kind of jumped all over you there, so.
Yeah, yep, um.
Yeah, we did, or you're good?
I we did jump over, but that was okay. I think I'm good. Oh, the chicken thing. I don't know if um Matt or Nate was gonna bring that up. Um, I'm sure you will. I just want to make sure that got mentioned too with the feedback.
Yeah, Nate shared with me that we're getting a lot of feedback, so. So uh, we're gonna finish up that feedback process, um. See if we're prepared uh to have a work session on the twenty first. We'll let you know soon if if we're prepared for that or not, um, but it's it sounds like we are getting feedback.
Okay. All right, you're done, Councilmember Hatfield?
I asked if it was in English or chicken, but uh.
What?
If it was in English or chicken.
I'm done, Mayor.
All right, thanks. Uh, Nate, anything?
No, I don't have anything to add.
All right, remodeling is pretty much. We shouldn't be all squared, right?
Yeah, yep, yeah, those projects are are pretty well wrapped up at this point. Um, I know last week we were doing a couple punch list items yet. But I I think those should be pretty well complete at this point, so. Came to City Hall, you know, staff are starting to move in um to their spaces, so we're really focused on that process right now.
But we were, there was a number of us that was at the. But we were, there was a number of us that was at the use of force. With the PD, uh, last week, I don't, Wednesday night, I think it was. Was it this week? This week? No, last week, last Wednesday, uh, and we did, uh, we were able to go, we asked the tour, what they did at the PD, so. That certainly changed that and given them a lot of extra space, so. That looks good. And then I've been through City Hall a, a few times and that certainly is quite a modification, so. That was great work. That, that still is an amazing project that was done in such a short period of time that, uh, just. Uh, you know, if you tried to do a project that fast, I don't know that you really could. So, um, it's RGM, right? RGM?
Yep, yeah, RJ was the, was the, you know, builder project manager and then, uh. The O A Daly was the architect involved.
I mean, we, we literally had that done i- in the time period that. We can legally turn that in and feel good about it. I mean, that, that was an amazing accomplishment, so. Uh, thanks to those guys, but thank you, Nat, Nate for, uh, and I know Brian, Brian had a huge part of it, but you guys for. Coordinating all the things.
Scott talking too.
Yes.
And Scotty? Okay, okay. I, well, r- real quick, Councilmember Hubbard, uh, the one thing I noticed that you didn't get was our outlets in our. Council chamber, but we'll figure that out. We'll have to run temporary and I'll call the fire marshal. Tell him we got improper wiring, that then he'll come in and.
Well, we gotta leave something to keep you hungry.
Alright, Councilmember Hubbard, go ahead.
Well, just a question on the construction. Was, were there supposed to be automatic doors at the entrance of some of the entrances at the community center? Did I miss that?
Yeah, the automatic doors at the community center are at the main entrance and at the ice rink, uh, and those are being finished up. So I don't know if they're quite actuated yet, but, um, I was there over the weekend and I saw they had it pretty close to, to ready to be turned on, so.
Okay, I was there, uh, Thanksgiving weekend and, uh, that, they weren't installed yet, is that?
Yeah, they were still working on them.
Yeah, those, those pieces of equipment had a, a length, a, a longer order period to them, um. So, yeah, they were, they were scarce on the market.
And, and if people are wondering what they're doing, going to the community center, we, there are some things that are still able to operate community center. One is the, uh, Carver County Arts Consortium has their gift shop there. Um, I heard that it's, uh, a pretty, I. Been meaning to go up there. I keep forgetting about it myself, um, that, um. It's a pretty nice setup up there for the arts consortium, so community center is open for that. And then the school is still operating there, right? Breakaway's still operating, Matt?
Yep, Tracks and Trails, uh, the Alphabet Junction and then St. Francis Capable Kids. And therapy are all still going.
Also Breakway Academy.
Yep, okay. Alright, uh, anything else, Nate?
Uh, no.
You're good? Okay.
Good.
What? Oh, am I missing something, Nate? You're good? Okay, Luke, anything?
Nothing legal, but, uh, Matt, when you were talking about our eighth position of lowest taxes. You commented that the other ones underneath us contract a lot of their stuff out. I bet you that one of them. After a snowfall hazard, streets cleaned as neat and as quickly as here in Chaska. I think they do a great job.
I agree.
Yep, without a doubt. So, alright, good. Anything else, Luke?
Nope.
Matt?
I just wanna put a plug in for December twenty-third at, uh, four thirty to seven. Uh, we're gonna have the Santa Claus parade. Uh, so this is gonna be sort of a takeoff of the Easter Bunny Parade, uh, that, uh, and the Chaska Hawk Parade and. All the special parades that we've had, uh, over the year just to brighten some spirits, but, uh, day before Christmas Eve. Uh, going out in the evening with a fire truck, police cars, so it decorated, lots of lights going off and Santa going around to all the neighborhoods, so. We'll be putting out a, uh, a map. Uh, indicating where we're gonna go and when we think we're gonna be there, so that people don't have to sit out the whole time. And, uh, um, be getting that out shortly, but it, uh, something to hopefully just kick off the. The Christmas weekend with.
Okay, awesome. You're good?
Yep.
Anybody else on mic TV? You got anything?
Nope, everything looks good here.
Okay, find that flag dog on it. Pearl Harbor Day, we don't have a flag.
I promise.
Alright, good, good. Uh, just a few things, uh, Mr. Kevin Wright, even though he's. Supposedly supposed to be relaxing, he's apparently watching, because he sent me a list of the items here, uh, that are happening. The, the holiday tree stall stroll is December first through the thirty-first. Um, you, you can take a selfie with the Chaska Tree, donate to Bonaful Basket. And stroll around the park. There's a gingerbread house contest. Uh, please submit your photo of your gingerbread house creation by Monday, December fourteenth at twelve o'clock. Putting will take place on the sixteenth. We talked about trim the tree. There is no, uh, it says. Free community event ornaments will be available for pickup at Chaska Community Center starting Tuesday, December eighth. Uh, from, so tomorrow from eight to four thirty, ornaments will be placed. In a bin outside the main entrance of the C C E C. Each bag contains two ornaments, one bag per family. Limited supplies. Stop by early. There's a lodge holiday party on December ninth. Fifty degrees on December ninth. Summer night's a pretty good day, though. Um, one to twelve, one to two thirty, Santa is gonna make an appearance there. Yeah, that Santa's busy this year. Uh, so he will be there. Uh, as there, I, it's, it's a drive-by, it's not inside. Oh, I see they have them alphabetically. Uh, lined up, or one they can come through and, uh, Lodge is gonna give a little thing. Got a snowflake shelf on the elf, uh, New Year's Eve party pack. For families, so, and then the list continues on, so lots of things, uh, happening, so. Uh, another thing I wanna talk about, speaking about Santa, there's a gentleman called Chaska Santa. Uh, has been very, very active in the community, really working hard on the Toys for Tots. Uh, I know that he is looking for some volunteers, uh, the, they were hoping to distribute gifts by the twelfth. Uh, but due to the COVID and, and apparently the Marines not being able to get, uh, uh, um. Toys out, so they're gonna be doing it eighteen, nineteenth and twentieth. I know he is looking for help. So, uh, uh, he has been very, very active in the community, so he's on Facebook, so if you have that ability. To help him, uh, he would certainly welcome any help that, uh, you could possibly offer. We talked about the Santa Parade, December twenty-third. Um. Swearing in, we already talked about the, uh, we've talked a lot about the Blue Ribbon Commission from, um. The, the Met Council and about transportation, but apparently their final report came out. And we got a, a message from Len Simic, uh, with Southwest Transit and. He is, uh, he says, I think he stated he's about as happy as he could be with how it came out. I, I think were his words, um. Um, let me see here, if I can get that. Nah, I can't figure out why it's not coming up. But anyways, he was pretty happy with the outcome and, uh. The, uh, Chair, Mayor Havelin from Edina, uh, was strong in supporting the, uh, the opt-outs or. Uh, so, um, hopefully that's favorable in, in our position. I think we still wanna have those conversations with Southwest Transit moving forward and, and I think Matt is setting up some meetings to have some. Conversations just for our viewpoints, where we know where we're at.
Yeah, just, you know, uh, it's, uh, myself and Len and then, uh. Uh, manager of Eden Prairie and Chan Ass, and we're all gonna be getting together to talk about that next week, so.
Perfect. Yeah, I, I think that'll be a good conversation, especially now that that report is finalized. I mean, you kinda got a little better idea. Where, um, where things are going from there. Um, the other thing I wanna comment on is, um, not sure who did it, but I'm. Starting to see signs on the dead ends saying future road expansion. I think that that's great. I think that there's still some. Couple dead ends that don't have anything, um, but I think that that's important as, as we move forward and for future. Uh, councils that we continue that any road that's dead-ended in a, in a development, that we put those on there. Uh, as soon as the, the barricade sign goes up, just to, um, continue that process, because it. It won't save the headaches, but at least we have something to say that, you know, that sign was up there as soon as. Uh, the project was finished, so there's no, no question, because I noticed, um. I said I was out in southwest area, that newest development, uh, the one closest to two twelve. And they're building houses there quick and they're gonna be at those dead ends before we know it, so. Um, I'm glad to see that those signs are up and let's not quit. Let's get them on anywhere that we got a, a dead end in a. Dead-ended cul-de-sac, uh. Anywhere in those areas, so. Uh, there's just something else I had, I wanted to bring up and I can't think of what it is, so, but that's all I can think of, so. Last call, otherwise, uh, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, motion by Councilmember Hatfield. Second.
Second by Hubbard.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard. Good to see if I had that unmute button. Uh, Matt, I gotta call you right after about when you wanna pick these papers up for tomorrow, so.
I'll just pick them up at eight fifteen.
Okay, alright. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Gra.
Yes.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes.
Wind Shuttle, yes. Passes four oh with, uh, customer long out, so have a good night. Uh, we'll see you in a couple weeks and, uh, enjoy, enjoy the great weather. See ya.
Thank you.